Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call our Bloomington City Council meeting to order this evening. It is Monday, November 18th, 2024. Thank you to everyone who has joined us here in the council chambers and everyone watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any covering, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks to everybody who is joining us here tonight. We've got a good crowd for a rainy Thursday, rainy Monday evening, so thank you so very much. Our first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. And council, we have a full agenda once again this evening. We have under item two, our introductory items, we have the introduction of new employees. We have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday and then a proclamation for the Japanese Local Government Professionals Day. We've got a very special group of friends with us this evening to talk with us about Japanese Local Government Professionals Day. Under our consent agenda, we've got 22 items and who has consent? Councilmember Lowman has consent this evening. 22 items, excuse me, 25 items under consent, our consent business. The big one is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, item four. We've got 11 items under there. We have public hearings on item 4.1 regarding the vacation of public drainage and utility easements. Item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding an ordinance, ordinance to vacate a public plaza area at the M.O.A. Water Park. Item 4.3 is another public hearing, this regarding zoning code reorganization. Item 4.4, another public hearing, approve the feasibility study and order the pavement management program. Item 4.5, our fourth, our fifth public hearing, the resolution to approve feasibility study regarding Normandale Boulevard, PNP Trail and Sidewalk Improvement Project. Item 4.6 is a public hearing regarding an ordinance establishing a housing improvement area at the Heights Condominium Association. Item 4.8, you guessed it, another public hearing, this an ordinance to increase water and wastewater rates. And 4.9, a public hearing regarding an ordinance to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees. Item 4.10 is a resolution to change our storm water charges and 4.11 is a resolution approving the 2025 utility fund budgets. That's a lot under item four. That's a lot of public hearings, so we've got some work to do there. Under organizational business, item 5.1, we'll be having a budget discussion for 2025 regarding public works, the general fund there, and then fleet and facilities. Item 5.2 is a discussion on the residential solid waste contract terms for extension. Item 5.3 is a study item, that is regarding the missing middle housing update in the city of Bloomington. And we'll wrap up, as we always do, on item 5.4, a city council policy and issue update. Council, any questions or additions or subtractions to our agenda this evening? Hearing no, no comments, I will move the agenda as stated. Look for a second.
Second.
Motion and a second by councilmember Lowman to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. I'll take the opportunity to mention that councilmember Carter is not able to be with us this evening, and that's why we are at a six zero vote this evening. Item, we've got contradictory items. Item 2.1, why don't we start, why don't we start, we're going to make it up just a touch, we're going to move it just a touch, and I'm going to amend the agenda now that we've approved it. I'm going to, we're going to start with visiting our folks from the Japanese local government delegation here in Bloomington. I'm going to head down to the podium, and we're going to start off with that, if we could. As I mentioned, we've got a very special group of people here joining us today. Members of the Japanese Local Government Center from New York City have joined us here in Bloomington. They've been here since yesterday, and they're spending a couple of days with us, learning more about it. I'm going to invite all of you up here, while I read the proclamation, then I'm going to turn it over to their executive director to do some introductions and a bit more of explanation as to what the Japanese Local Government Center is. Please come on up, we generally do this, and want to make sure that you get some camera time. Please come on around. So our first proclamation this evening is for, he does, proclamation regarding the Japanese Local Government Professionals Day, Monday, November 18th, 2024. Whereas Bloomington, Minnesota is honored to host the distinguished delegation of local government professionals from the Japan Local Government Center. And whereas this exchange provides an opportunity for the sharing of knowledge, experiences, and best practices in local governance, fostering global collaboration and understanding. And whereas Bloomington recognizes the value of cross-cultural dialogue and the importance of strengthening international partnerships. And whereas the shared commitment to building vibrant, sustainable communities through effective local governance aligns with our efforts in addressing challenges and promoting the well-being of our residents, businesses, and visitors. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2024, as Japanese Local Governance Professionals Day in Bloomington. We extend our warmest welcome to the Japanese delegation and express our deep appreciation for the opportunity to learn from one another. Through this visit, we aim to enhance mutual understanding, promote cultural exchange, and continue building stronger ties between our communities. Signed, this 18th day of November, 2024. As I mentioned, the group joined us yesterday, and we had a nice tour of the city of Bloomington, and today they spent the day here at City Hall, learning all about Bloomington, the services and departments and the folks who work here in the city of Bloomington. And it's, it's been a, it's been an interesting 24, 48 hours here because to hear and to learn their experiences as compared to experiences here in the city of Bloomington and here at City Hall, and their impressions of what we do and how we do it, it's just such an interesting perspective, things that we take for granted, and we kind of are kind of everything that we do every day, and they see things just a bit differently. And I'm going to call up the executive director, Haruki Matsui, he's the executive director of the Japan Local Government Center. And I would ask you, please introduce your team, talk just a bit more about the center itself, and explain what you hope to accomplish here and why you're here, please.
So I am, and we are very honored here to be here and be here to study our democratic citizens here. And we are, our organization aims to make friendship between American city and Japanese city. The goal is very simple. Our mission is the result and achievement here bring to, to bring back to Japan, so we reflect our municipalities or prefectures. It's, this is a very important mission for us. So we are, I am from Tokyo Metropolitan Government, dispatched to Japan Local Government Center run by the central government of Japan. So here is the member, is here is Mr. Yono, is from Kumamoto City in the southern area. And next is the Okamoto, Mr. Okamoto is the middle of Japan, of the Bizen City, and the northern area from Miyagi Prefecture, the Akutsu, Mr. Akutsu. And then Nakagami from, you know, the Hiroshima City, you know, very famous for Americans, they're from, he's, she's very excellent, good at English, so, oh, that's all.
Very good. Well, it is, is it an honor to welcome you, and as, as is the custom, we wanted to make sure that we presented you with gifts that reflect Bloomington and reflect our gratitude for you being here with us today. So we have gift bags for each of you, and in the gift bags, of course, we were, we went very Bloomington, so we have, we have chocolate from Drooling Moose, of course. We have pieces from Artistry, the gift shop at Artistry, and we have lapel pins, City of Bloomington lapel pins. So. I want to make sure that I present to each of you, you're very welcome. We, we, we had, we spent the day together yesterday, as I said, we had dinner together, and just a charming group of folks, and so interesting to talk to, and it's just, it's a pleasure that Bloomington is, has raised its profile internationally, that this is, this is something that the organization would like to join us at, and so, very pleased at it. I have an official proclamation to hand to you, and do we have our official photographer, Mr. Verbrugge?
I can do it, too.
Oh. Why don't we all step this way just a touch? And here's the proclamation, everybody with a big smile.
Is everybody smiling? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir, thank you so very much for being here. I'm going to send that back with you as well, so, thank you. And while I'm here, we're just going to continue to go out of order in the agenda, council, if that's okay? I think we're going to do that, that will work. Because next up is another proclamation that I would like to do, this regarding Small Business Saturday, which is coming up on November 30th. We have a couple of folks from the Zawadi Centers, Yusuf and Ahmed, please join us here, and I will turn the microphone over to you as we go along here. Small Business Saturday is November 30th, 2024. Whereas Bloomington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Census, of the 40,630 businesses in Hennepin County, 39,200 are small businesses with fewer than 100 employees. That's more than 96% of the businesses in Hennepin County. And whereas for many residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicks off a season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and culture. And consumers know that supporting small, independently owned businesses has positive social, economic, and environmental impacts. And whereas Bloomington has partnered with Hennepin County to support Small Business Saturday with the multi-jurisdictional Love Local Campaign, which encourages residents to support local, independently owned businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and make our communities vibrant and livable. And whereas the United States Small Business Association Administration, SBA, as well as advocacy groups and other public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota. And I urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the entire year dated this 18th day of November, 2024. It's hard to believe we're to that point in November, we're past halfway through November already, my goodness, and rolling right up on Small Business Saturday, and we have so many small businesses within the city of Bloomington that do such outstanding work and unique and outstanding work. I just, just Drooling Moose that we just presented to our Japanese friends is a great example of a small business within the city of Bloomington. We have cut ribbons on a number of different small businesses over the past couple of years, and they really are thriving, and it's so very exciting. And one of the small businesses that is doing so well is the Zawadi Center, and I wanted to, to turn the microphone over, say thank you, and congratulations on the outstanding work that you folks are doing there.
Thank you very much, good evening, hello to you all, and many familiar faces. I am honored to be here with you all, and I am very pleased to be a part of Bloomington. It's a great city for small business, and I cannot express it enough how thankful I am to the city of Bloomington, to everyone who is part of the city. Zawadi Center, 1701 American Boulevard. I would like to encourage the, our friends from Japan to come and visit us. It's the only cultural campus in Bloomington. It's a unique designation that we have. It's a local business, it's a community business, it's community-owned, we have multiple businesses under one umbrella. It's a 30,000 square foot facility, it houses a coffee shop with unique drinks, so if you haven't been there, please come and check out Nomadic Cafe. Also, we have a local East African flavors in the Zawadi restaurant. We also have a professional office space for work, kids playground area for families. We have a large event center. We hosted the State of the City for 2024, so we were honored to have you all. And my name is Yusuf Ali, I'm the CEO of the business, glad to be a part of this city, and hopefully we'll continue strong. Thank you very much, I appreciate the invitation.
Absolutely, and we so appreciate the work that you do and the community that you build over on the east side. Let's take an official picture. This is what they call the grip and grin, so you got to grip and grin.
Okay, you're all smiling? Yeah.
Thank you. Now, council, try to get us back on track in terms of the agenda that we actually did approve. Let's go to the introduction of new employees. We do this for the folks who are here, maybe for the first time or watching for the first time. As we get new employees within the city of Bloomington, we like to introduce them at council meetings as an opportunity to, to get to know them, to see them as a council and to introduce and talk to them as a council, but also to make sure that the community gets an opportunity to meet them as well, because it's an important part of them doing their jobs is the connection they have with residents within the city of Bloomington. So that is what we try to do. Where are we going to start? Do you want to start with community development or public health? Let's start with community development. Kim, are you here? There she is.
I'll start by introducing to you, or reintroducing to you, Bernadette Gillespie. She is, she started back here on October 7th as the new returning building official, also titled the Building and Inspections Manager here in Bloomington. Bernadette brings 18 years of experience in local government specializing in plan review, inspections, and code compliance. She previously worked here as the Building and Inspection Supervisor between 2017 and 2023, and then worked in a diner for a while before returning here as the building official. So the team is very happy to have her back, and so please welcome back Bernadette.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're so glad when people go to eat diner and come back. We really are happy.
I am very happy to be back, very excited to be working with my team in Building and Inspections, and look forward to working with you all over the next year with some fun ordinance updates.
A lot going on, so, good, good, welcome back, good to see you again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our other community development staff person that I'm introducing to tonight is Henry Kurzweil, as the new commercial property appraiser. Henry started working with us on November 4th, and he has a bachelor's degree from UW Whitewater with a major in finance and real estate. Henry previously worked as a commercial fee appraiser specializing in multifamily valuations for a number of private companies, and is this aspiring PGA Tour superstar according to his friends, and is a cheesehead at heart, but also is learning to love Minnesota. And so, welcome, Henry.
Good evening, Henry, welcome.
Thank you, good to be here. Yeah, as Kim mentioned, making the transition from the private sector over to the public sector, so it's a very fun time. Everybody on the team has been great so far, and I'm really looking forward to my future with the city of Bloomington.
Very good. And what's your handicap?
We're at four or five right now.
Damn, come on, man. Well done, thank you for being here with us. Next, we have a new group of employees from Public Health, Dr. Nick Kelly is going to introduce them. Dr. Kelly, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Like to introduce Jill Collins-Matson to you. She is coming to us, devoted, dedicated, public health professional, and she is our community outreach staff member. So different from co-ed, really helping coordinate the work we do in the community with our mobile health hub. She comes to us with a ton of experience, most recently working in the South Metro, serving Frasier, and so very excited to be back here in the South Metro.
Welcome, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us to attend tonight. It's a pleasure to be with you all, I'm really excited to be in this role, since it's brand new to the division, and I'm just excited to do so many things.
Good.
Yes.
Great, nice to meet you, thanks for being here.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Then I'd like to introduce you to Katie Mo. She's a registered dietitian serving in our WIC program. She comes to us with an undergrad degree in the University of Louisiana, and a master's in nutrition from Appalachian State University in North Carolina, and spent the last five years really serving individuals struggling with food insecurity in St. Paul, and joined our team.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me, I'm very excited to be working on such a supportive team, and WIC is such a great program, so I'm looking forward to learning a lot with you all.
Wonderful, and some, at some point, I'd love to hear the, the journey from Louisiana to App State to Twin Cities, so, but welcome, glad, glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you, turns out I love the winters, so.
Ah, perfect.
And then I'd like to introduce you to Teresa Hogan, she's our Community Resilience Supervisor, comes to us with a master's in nursing, a very diverse clinical background, worked in Minneapolis, worked in, most recently in Dakota County, and she's here helping run our community resilience team, helping us really improve our community from EP and SHIP to make our more resilient community.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Mayor, if you have extra treats from the Drooling Moose, I am located across the street in Public Health, if you find Nick, he can show you to my area, I would be happy to take whatever you want.
We will see what we have, thank you.
And then we have Munera Salid, she's one of our new public health specialists on the community resource team, where she is working on an infant health program, some new funding we have to help better address challenges we're seeing in our maternal health and infant health. She comes to us with a recent graduate from the U of M School of Public Health, and is a fantastic addition to our team.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening, nice to meet you all. I am excited to join the division, and I look forward to contributing to the great work that's already happening there to promote and improve on community health, so, nice to meet you all.
Very good, nice to meet you as well, thank you. To you and to all of our new employees, and I say this to all of our new employees, thank you for being with us tonight, and thanks for coming to the city of Bloomington and being part of the team that we have here. And we're so very glad that you're here and, and know that you understand the responsibility that comes with that, because for so many people, the city of Bloomington, you are the city of Bloomington. The work that they see you do, your interactions with them, really define the city of Bloomington. It's not so much the folks sitting up here or what happens here in City Hall, but it's the one-on-one interactions that they have with you. So, thank you for representing Bloomington, best of luck, and keep up the outstanding work as you move forward representing the city of Bloomington, because you all do very important work, so thank you so very much for being here tonight. Council, item three on our agenda is our consent business. Councilmember Lowman, you've got 25 items on the consent business, councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll do a call here for any additional consent agenda business that anybody wants to hold. Yep, I've got 21 and 24 already, and I personally have 314 and 31, and I think I could take care of the 314 before we even get to that, is there anything else?
So I mean, clarify that once again, if you couldn't, councilmembers?
Yep, so I got 31, 31, 314, 321, and 324, and I, I see here, Mayor, that there was a response from staff earlier about 314, which it looked like they had, as part of the draft, something had been removed in terms of the policy portion of it, Mayor, and there was no need to do that because there's a list earlier in the policy that says what securities that we could do.
If you wanted to hold that and explain that, we could.
And I don't think we need to hold that, that's why I'm going to take that off the list, so, I just wanted to explain that, why I was holding that. So then we just have the three, with given the time and the things we have on there, those are the three I have. So with that being said, I'll move 3.2 all the way to 320, and then 322, 320, 3.23, and 3.25.
Second. Thank you. Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Muah, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. Council, any additional questions or comments on that? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. So why don't we start then, if we could, councilmember, 3.21?
All right, Mayor, I've got 3.1, actually, before that was the one.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.1.
And so basically, this is just a resolution authorizing the American Rescue Plan, ARP expenditures and related budget adjustments for well seven projects. And I wanted to just state, as the nature of my job, I work with the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, that does work with the treasury, that just wanted to be sure that, that I noted that, that I do work with them, and I do have a treasury, and there's no financial impact with that. With that being said, I'd be happy to go ahead and make that motion.
Councilmember Lowman.
Move to approve the budget adjustment resolution to move 276,657 from the 250, 2550 Federal Relief Grants Fund to the 6100 Water Utility Fund in order to fund the well seven project.
Motion by councilmember Lowman, second by councilmember Muah, to pass a resolution on item 3.1, authorizing the American Rescue Plan expenditure for related budget adjustments to well seven. Councilmember Lowman, question, or, excuse me, member DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no problem. I did have a quick, I just have a quick clarification. I know that this, we had a well project in front of the Congress, and is this, is this the same one, or is this a different one? Were those ARP dollars, were those what were given, or did we have a separate item?
Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, councilmember DeLisandro, it's the same project. The, the community grant that we received for that project is, that's for the second half of the project, we're using our remaining ARP funds for the first half of the project.
Thank you.
Clarified, okay, very good. We've got a motion and a second on item 3.1, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. Now we can move to item three point.
Yeah, Mayor, the, yeah, the next two items have been held by councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be very quick on this one, regards the airport parking facility study, and I just wanted to make a formal request that staff also include the Metropolitan Airport Commission as one of the stakeholders in this study.
I think that's legitimate, Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no objection from staff. We had initially targeted property owners as the primary stakeholders we're focused on, but obviously, I think you understand, the airports commission has a perspective on the parking issues in the South Loop as well, so we're fine with that.
Perfect, very good.
Thank you, then I would move item 3.21.
Second. Motion by councilmember Nelson, second by councilmember Lowman, to approve item 3.21 with the understanding that we're going to add the Metropolitan Airports Commission to our airport parking facilities moratorium scope of work and study. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. And item 3.24, again, councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I held this one because candidly, I just wanted to have more conversation about doing a study about our urban tree canopy and forestry and all of that. We already put a study in place with regards to natural resources, and to be fair, I'm not, I'm not against the funding of the amount or anything, I'd rather see it just go to doing actual work and not a study. I mean, candidly, I have a lot of faith in our staff and our team that they can figure out where to put trees. If we put a policy in place that we place trees, because we have a number of diseased trees that were taken out, did a one-to-one, I'd rather see this go to taking out, did a one-to-one, I'd rather see this go to replace those trees, or some part of our natural resource plan, before we did another study on it. So, and I understand that there's maybe some grant funding, or some things like that. But I would hope we could maybe do that without this much expense for it.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Mr. Hanson is on WebEx, and Director Katry is here. So, I think I'll ask you to come to the podium and just provide some background on the scope of the plan that we're looking at here.
Park and Recreation Director Katry, good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, members of the council. I actually would defer to Dave Hanson, who's online, to talk a little bit about the scope, and then I can answer any other questions that you might have. Dave?
Very good. Mr. Hanson, are you with us, Dave?
Can you hear me?
We can indeed.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Councilmember Nelson, thanks for asking the question. The largest part of this plan, at least effort-wise, is a right-of-way tree inventory that we don't have right now. So, 173,000 of this is to go out and inventory all the Boulevard trees that we currently have, which will be important for us to understand what we have to take care of now, or if we wanted to enhance that service and increase it, and offer a different level of service when it comes to Boulevard trees. This will all be packaged up as data that we can use to inform good decision-making in the future. We can share it out to the public through an online web viewer. The other part is a canopy assessment that looks at trees citywide on public and private property, identifies gaps in canopy. It can take a look back to a different point in time and compare it from then to now to see canopy change. For instance, the damage done by Emerald Dashboard to canopy, and help us quantify that and be able to make more informed decisions around that. It also calculates all the ecosystem services provided by the tree canopy in the city, so from stormwater to air quality to equity issues and urban heat island effect. All feed into the decision-making of the plan. And at the end of the day, the consultant will help us take all this data with public engagement from residents, key stakeholders within the city, in the community, council and commissions, to develop a plan to go forward for Bloomington. We've done a good job of managing trees in Bloomington without such a plan. I've been part of it for my entire career. But we're really unusual in the fact that we don't have a comprehensive plan like this. It's something that we've talked about for a while. We applied for a grant last year to fund more of it. I think $300,000. We weren't selected. This year, we did apply for a $50,000 grant through Hennepin County to help fund this, and contribute to payment of this contract.
I'll turn it back over to Ann.
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think Dave did a nice job talking about the scope. I think one other thing that I wanted to mention is, we've been talking to the council about this for a couple of years. We've talked a lot about what does forestry mean for the City of Bloomington. We currently only have a couple of staff that are dedicated, part-time to forestry in the city. And I think as we talk to the community, even our commission, even sometimes the council, there is a lack of understanding of the staff and financial resources that we have to allocate to our urban forest. And this plan would create that plan in conjunction with the council, the community, and the commissions, to determine what forestry is going to mean moving forward to the City of Bloomington. Everything from, do we want a Boulevard tree program, to staffing levels and financial resources that we need to be able to achieve are mutually determined goals.
Mr. Verbrugge, something to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And Dave referenced that we had applied for a grant. We were not successful receiving it.
We received a $50,000...
The $50,000 grant from Hennepin County, but the larger grant we missed out on. Do you think that we're missing out on grants because we don't have a plan to support it?
We absolutely are. And there are many grants that we can't even apply for, because we don't have a plan.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a couple of specific questions. Is it possible to use our Natural Resources Plan to apply for those grants?
No, it has to be an urban forest plan.
Can you give me an idea of how much money we're missing out on in terms of grants?
Dave, I'm going to defer to you on this one. Do you know by chance?
Yeah, the Hennepin County grants that were eligible for are up to $50,000. That's the one that we've got. The Relief DNR Grant, I think those are up to 100. The Community Forestry Grant, which is the one that they incentivize communities to have a plan by this, by funding plan development, and requiring that you have a plan in order to apply for it. Those grants are up to 500,000, I believe. Don't, I don't want to be quoted on that. They're in the 300, we applied for $300,000 last year. I think they go up to 5.
Okay. I guess then my question would be, maybe this requires further conversation for me, or my colleagues want to move it forward. I mean, because what I hear is maybe $650,000. We're going to spend 400,000 to maybe get 600,000. I would just rather this money go into doing the things we know we need to do. And again, you know, I realize that we don't have a huge staff. We have expanded the staff a little bit, but, you know, I don't know what the requirements of the plan are, that, you know, we might not be able to put that together ourselves. I just, here's the bottom line. We put a bunch of money into a natural resources plan, and we have no money to fund it. You know, we did a plan for the Minnesota River corridor area, and we don't have money to fund it. You know, we're going to have another plan that we don't have money to actually fund doing the work. And in my experience, plans are great, but they don't actually do the work. And I'd rather just do the work. I'd rather put the money into the work. We know we, we know some of the things that we need to do. I'd rather put the money into doing them. That's just my opinion. I may be an outlier, but, or I may not be. So, and I appreciate the work, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know you want to do the best thing for the community. I'm not questioning that. I just think we'd be better off putting it into actually doing the work, instead of doing a study and creating a plan.
I appreciate your comments, councilmember, and I agree, at times, we seem to overplan the plans for the work that we do. But I am sensitive to the fact that so many grant opportunities are not a trust-us, we know what we're doing, or we've got an idea of what we might want to do within the community. They require an actual plan to see, to determine whether or not it's viable, it's worthwhile, and what the whole plan is. And I think the quick math that you did in your head, that may be a one-year, a 12-month kind of thing, as opposed to a longer-term possibility in terms of local, state, federal grants that might be possible. So, that's just my thought. Councilmember DeLisandro, and then I saw Councilmember Lohman as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just get some clarification. I'm not sure I know of our Natural Resources Management Plan. I know of our Parks Master Plan, and I know of our Natural Resources Management Office. But even when I go out on our website, the plan that I've seen that is called a Natural Resources Management Plan is from the River Valley, and it's from 2018. So, I don't, I don't know what, I don't mean to be flippant, but I don't know what it is you're referring to that we've spent money on that is related to this. Because my, as I thought about it, and this is, so, as a sidebar, I will say one more time, this is why it's really great for us to have a long-term view of all the things that go into creating a strategy. Because right now, what I feel like we're stuck in is that this is, this is absolutely in line with the creation of the Natural Resources Management Office. We funded that. We said we were going to do that, and then we hired a forester. And now, the forester needs some information in order to do this job. And this keeps going and keeps going. But we've forgotten that we told them that that was a strategic priority, and as such, it needs to continually be funded as it moves its priorities forward. But because we don't have that visibility, we don't tell people upfront that this is a 10-year project, or a five-year project. When we did that with the Parks Master Plan, we know that it's going to take 20 years to get those nine parks moved over. We know that. As a council, we know that. And so, when they come to us and say, we're ready to do the first three, we were like, of course you are, because it was in the plan. I like that for us. And so, I guess my question to you all is, is this out of bounds for what you all thought we were going to get when we decided to create a Natural Resources Management Office and put Dave Hanson finally in charge of our ecological valuable resources? Because this is right in line with what I was expecting. So, maybe I'm the only one. But this is the kind of thing I was expecting to come out of that movement that we did as a council, to create that important area of work.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I guess, kind of looking forward, I guess, what I would, as this councilmember would say, hey, this is great. Can we apply some of this work that's being done to that overall big plan that we need to write? I imagine that that's possible, to take some of the work that we're doing now and put that into an overall forestry plan that would allow us to get those bigger dollars down the line. And then, secondarily, I guess I wasn't that surprised to see this thing here. I know that a number of meetings back, a number of us councilmembers brought forward some of our concerns about some of the trees that were out there that we're seeing coming down. And I expected at some point to see some type of response from staff. I saw this as the first step in that, in that response to that overall concern that we had from across the city with having trees being down. So, I for one, you know, barring the first thing that I mentioned about, you know, seeing if there's a way to apply this to that, and I don't even want a response today, because I don't want to catch you off-guard on that. We can talk about that afterwards. But if, you know, I'm happy to make this motion and move this forward, because it's totally in line with what this council had identified as being a major issue.
Any additional comments? Well, councilmember Nelson, I think you've heard a couple of folks. And as I said, appreciate your comments. And yes, sometimes we tend to overplan. But I'm also of the belief that if you don't know where you're going, you're bound to get there. And so, I want to make sure that we know very specifically where we're going and have a good idea. So... Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I would authorize the City Manager award the contract for the project 24 to 60 to Daily Resources Group Incorporated for their Urban Forestry Master Plan Consultant Services for the City of Bloomington, with a not-too-exceed amount of $423,356,000, including a proposal alternative for $8,700, and a 10% contingency, and authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to enter into the related agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to accept item 3.24, awarding the contract on the Urban Forestry Master Plan as part of the consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just a very quick comment. Just want to say, I am going to vote against this, but not because I disagree with the intent of it, just because I think the money should be put into, directly into doing work in our natural environment. So, but appreciate staff's work on this, and I look forward to the results of it.
Thank you for that clarification. Any additional comments, council? Councilmember Revas?
Yeah, unfortunately, I will also vote against it for the same reasons. I'd rather see results immediately than have to invest in a study that, if we pay attention to what's available for the federal grants for this particular item, there's not very much left in there, and it's not being offered at the moment, from what I learned recently. So, that being said, I will vote against it as well. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on item 4.2, excuse me, 3.24, awarding the contract to the Urban Forest Master Plan. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 4-2, with councilmembers Nelson and Revas in opposition. Thank you very much for bringing the consent agenda forward, Councilmember Lohman. Appreciate it. We will move on on our agenda. Counsel, we'll move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And as I pointed out, when we were going through the agenda, we've got 11 of these, and this is going to be a busy evening for us, for a number of different reasons. I would ask you to keep your statements short, make sure that your questions are on topic and on point, and we move forward through these as expeditiously as possible, because if not, we're going to be here until tomorrow sometime. So, I want to make sure that we do that. Item, I will call item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Lee Stamping's First Edition. Henepin County. Julie Long, our city engineer, will lead us through this. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This one is fairly straightforward. It's vacation of some existing easements, in preparation of recording a plat by the end of the year. It is along 96th Street, in preparation for the future Public Works fleet expansion building.
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Long on this one? No questions? Very good. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on item 4.1. Again, regarding the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Lee Stamping, First Edition. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1?
Mr. Mayor, we have several residents online. So, I would ask that if any residents would like to speak on this item, they can unmute themselves right now.
And again, to any residents online, this is for item 4.1 specifically.
Nobody's unmuting themselves, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Last call for anybody in the council chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, nobody online or on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1? I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 4.1 this evening? No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, with Councilmember DeLisandro stepping away. Counsel, are there any additional questions or anything to bring forward regarding 4.1? If not, I would look for some action on item 4.1.
Hope you do that, Mayor.
Councilmember Muah?
I move to adopt an ordinance approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Lee Stamping, First Edition, Henepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt item 4.1 as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 4.2 is our second public hearing of the evening. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate the Public Plaza area over the MOA Water Park extension and deadline of the Resolution of Summary and the Resolution of Summary publication. Ms. Long?
Mr. Mayor, council, this is very similar to the item you just approved, but you approved it back in June of 2022 originally, and provided an extension in June of 2023. The plat has not yet been recorded, and in order to facilitate the property owner looking for financing, they would like to ask for another extension. This would match up with our finance deadline. The new deadline would be December 31 of 2025. So, it's not a new action, it's extending the action you previously took.
Extension of a previously taken action by the council. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Long on this one? No questions? This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing for item 4.2. This is an ordinance to vacate the Public Plaza area regarding and related to the MOA Water Park, and given the extension of deadlines. And we'll get to the Resolution of Summary publication as we go through this. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2? Anyone online listening, are you here to talk about item 4.2? If you are, please unmute and chime in now, please.
Mr. Mayor, no one is unmuting themselves.
No one's unmuting. Counsel, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one unmuting online? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Revas, to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? Anything to clarify on this one? Councilmember Nelson?
Is there any update on the project, or is this just an extension, and we're just in a holding pattern?
My understanding is, this is an extension, hoping to move things forward. So, without this extension, I think it makes it more difficult from a financing standpoint. So, that's about the, that's about the update. It's about as updated as you're going to get, I'm afraid. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just related to the financing portion of this, does, is this enabling or running up against the deadline that we know we have in 2025?
I believe it matches the deadline.
That's the whole point?
That's the whole point.
Okay, great.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, counsel, I'd look for action. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt an ordinance modifying ordinance number 202318, related to the partial vacation of Lindell Lane, AKA... to the partial vacation of Lindell Lane, AKA East 81st Street, as dedicated in Airport South Edition, Mall of America, Mall of America Fifth Edition, and the Mall of America Eighth Edition, according to the recorded plat thereof, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson, to approve item 4.2 as stated, with one correction. Councilmember Loman, I think you said also known as East 81st Street. It's actually formerly known as East 81st.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I didn't want to say something wrong.
Formerly known as East 81st Street. So we have a motion in a second to accept item 4.2 as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Loman, summary publication, please.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-18.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson, for summary publication on item 4.2 this evening. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to item 4.3. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance chapter 19 to 21 zoning code reorganization. And we have with us this evening Emily Haspeck. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I will wait one second for my presentation to be up there. So yeah, this project is to combine chapter 19 with chapter 21 of the city code. And hopefully this will be pretty quick. So we went to planning commission for a study item and a public hearing already, and then we are here for a public hearing tonight. So the why, we wanted to combine the two zoning chapters to improve the user experience for staff, residents, all of you, and to avoid any potential confusion or misinterpretation. So there were no really big substantive changes with this. It was only if something was inconsistent with state law or if it didn't match with other regulations in the code. Exhibit A, that was in the packet, showed all the landing spots of the new sections so that they didn't all go into chapter 21, which is the zoning section. But hopefully you all had a chance to look through that exhibit. And then mostly this project was just stylistic and reference changes, so changing shall the must, changing symbols to words, all type of stylistic and kind of grammar stuff like that. And then additionally, we made changes to appendix C. This appendix C contains fine amounts. We didn't make any changes to the actual fine amounts, just the number of the code that was referenced there. And this appendix C will be changed through resolution. And with that, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance, and then summary publication of the ordinance, and then, like I said, resolution to amend appendix C.
Thank you. Council, any questions of Ms. Haspeck on this one? Councilmember Dalisandro?
Just a real quick question. Does that mean that that chapter 19 is now in its entirety to be intentionally left blank, or are we going to use it for something else?
Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, it is, it will just be reserved, and so it's just going to be left blank for now.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions? If not, thank you much. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on item 4.3. This is a hearing to adopt an ordinance to create one unified zoning chapter thereby amending chapters 1, 2, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 21, and 22, and appendix A of the city code. Is there anyone looking to speak to item 4.3 this evening? Anyone wishing to speak? No one coming forward? Again, to our callers on the phone, if you wish to speak to item 4.3, please unmute and speak up now.
And callers, you can hit star six if you would like to unmute.
No one is unmuting themselves, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no one online, no one coming forward in the chambers. Last call for anybody in the chambers. No one coming forward. Council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3 this evening.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. This is pretty basic stuff, but I think it's an ongoing effort by the city to clean up and to move forward and to make more sense of a zoning code, which I think always happens within cities and should happen with, you know, every couple decades or so to make sure that it's up to date and from a style standpoint, looks and reads correctly. And I commend staff for the work that they have done on this, because this is, can be tedious work, I know, and it can be a bit long, but it looks good, and I think it's the right direction for the city to go. Councilmember Dalisandro?
I'd love it if somebody could give me like a 20-second understanding of like the checks and balances associated with this, just so we don't, we didn't miss anything.
Ms. Haspeck, or even Ms. Manderscheid, maybe the review process as we go through this and try to update the zoning code and the chapters and so on, who it all goes through, which eyeballs are on it?
Mayor members. The typical process is that staff get together and, I'm sorry, mayor members, the typical process is that staff will get together and identify the need to amend the code. Staff at the planning level will review, make specific edits, then it'll go through an internal review process, making its way through the legal department, where we will not only review the content, but as well as check cross-references, which is why I suspect you see all these references to other chapters that were similarly needing to be moved from 19 to 21, the cross-references. And then it will go to the planning commission, because it relates to 19 or 21, and it had a review in the planning commission, and now it's here for the city council. Each of these steps, the planning commission and city council received public notice because it's an ordinance and an opportunity for feedback, as well as discussion at the planning commission level. This is the typical process for all of our ordinances with the, that would relate to 19 and 21. I'll say that since I started eight-plus years ago, this has been an additional challenge for everyone to try and figure out where to look for certain things. So this is a very helpful process and is not the glamorous editing type of work that people get to do. So thank you to all the staff that were involved in this laborious task.
And I would add also, Councilmember, this is generally, if something is missed, airplanes are not going to fall from the sky, and it's, well, we can go back and we can clean up any things that, anything that the staff would identify that needs to be cleaned up. So that's the joy of doing it.
Yeah, I totally appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. It was mostly just because it's such a large shift, that I just wanted to understand if we had a couple, like a belt and suspenders kind of feeling about it, as opposed to a lot of what we do, you know, which we'll take one out, we'll move it around or whatever. This is just such a large effort. So thanks to everybody who worked on it to give us confidence. I could tell you for a fact that I wasn't going to find the one that we missed, right? That was the point I was trying to make, is that if you're leaving it up to us, that's not a great plan.
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Would agree.
Pardon me?
Additional questions, council, on item 4.3? If not, I would look for action. Councilmember Dalisandro?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, Mr. Mayor. Can we put it back up on the screen, or do you want me to read it from here? Let me see if I can get this right. A motion to adopt an ordinance to create one unified zoning chapter thereby amending chapters 1, 2, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 22, and appendix A of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Revas, to approve and move item 4.3 as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Dalisandro, summary publication, please.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance to create one unified zoning chapter, thereby amending chapters 1, 2, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 21, 22, and appendix A of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Revas, for summary publication of item 4.3. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. And Councilmember Dalisandro, can I ask you to take on the final motion?
Yeah, we have a third one, right?
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution amending appendix C to the city code relating to the creation of a unified zoning chapter in the city code. Just a quick comment, we don't need to reference that that's the finance table here? Okay, great. Then, thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution amending appendix C to the city code relating to the creation of a unified zoning chapter in the city code. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you much. And again, extended thanks. I know it's, I know you've done the lion's share of the work, but I know this has been a team effort as well. So if you could extend the thanks to the folks who have been working on that, it would be very, very much appreciated. Thank you. Item 4.4, our fourth public hearing of the evening. This is a public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2025 pavement management program, street reconstruction project. And we've got with us Christian Nagano, and I see Brian Hanson as well.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. I say that, I think I mispronounce it every time we see you, and I apologize for that.
Utilize our technology here, give myself a couple inches. Good evening, Mayor, council members. As you mentioned, Christian and I are here before you this evening to discuss the ordering of the 2025 101 PMP program, or PMP project, the reconstruct project. I'm going to let Christian start it off here, and I'm going to touch on a little bit of assessment stuff towards the back end, and then we will have time for questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Christian.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to preface this presentation by saying that this information has been heard by council before, and might sound repetitive, but we are more so giving the presentation for the folks in attendance and folks online. Next slide, please. Technology is not cooperating here. Oh, this way. All right, we're rolling here. So I'm going to try to keep it brief. What is our PMP program? Our PMP program, hereby that pavement management program, is an asset management plan for our road infrastructure. Basically, you can think of it as a maintenance plan for, maintenance plan for our road infrastructure. And it does a couple of things for us. It allows us to reduce the costs by taking the right action at the right time. We developed this plan by using a metric called the pavement index, pavement condition index, that assesses the surface condition of our road infrastructure and assigns a rating to it. And we use that information along with, you know, projected utility projects and maintenance history to develop and forecast projects for future years. It also allows us to manage the assessment of locations for the, one for the adjacent property owners, but also to the overall city taxpayers. Why do we have a PMP program? Well, prior to the PMP, the methods are in place, were leading to system failure, admitting that we didn't have a systematic approach to our maintenance, and then this will leave new reconstructed street segment to deteriorate to the point of needing a new reconstruction. And that's what we're trying to illustrate here on, up ahead here, on this graph here. So on the left, you can see a graph that's showing that metric that I referenced earlier for a street segment that is not under the PMP program. And you can see that when the street is reconstructed, it gets a rating of 100, and nothing is, when nothing is done to it, it just basically deteriorates to the point of needing a new reconstruction. On the right, you see a street segment that's under the current PMP program, and then, you know, by applying various techniques at scheduled intervals, you can extend the life of the pavement. Next slide. So what is the state of the current PMP program? As part of the current PMP program, we apply three different techniques, the reconstruct, which is typically three to 4.5 miles per year, though our current project is only 2.9 miles. Our overlay miles, which are about nine miles, scheduled to drop to eight miles in 2026, and our seal code, and we typically aim to do 25 miles of seal code per year. And the goal of all these techniques is to, one, keep the overall city PCI at a 70 or above, keep our problem streets, meaning it's problem streets with a rating of less than 35 at 10% of less of our overall mileage. And we're showing also the PCI, and I think we're pretty successful at that, we're showing the overall PCI for the years 2023 and 2024, sitting at 78. How do we fund our PMP? So each various, each method of the PMP is funded differently. So our reconstruct, reconstruction project is funded through assessments, obligation bonds, our municipal and local stated funds, and water center and storm utility funds. The overlay project is funded through franchise fees and municipal, local, stated fund, and water center and storm utility funds, and then the seal code is solely funded through the franchise fee. What is the process of the PMP for the reconstruction? So it starts on the, in the fall of the year before the project year, so 2024 for the 2025 project. We come to council to order the project through a public hearing, which we're doing today, and then we'll go through our design period in the winter of '25, prepare plans and specs, bid the project in spring for summer construction, and then we come back full circle in the fall of '25 to approve a special assessment. And with, I would also like to note that there might be additions to this project, and one of them will be the north central sanitary sewer capacity improvement, which is an upsizing of the sanitary sewer capacity independently district in provisions of current and future development. One of the segments that were identified as part of this project is the Fremont Avenue segment, which also happens to be part of the 25 101 project. And if it's determined that that route is, will be used for the north central sanitary sewer capacity project, we will be including that segment as part of the 25 101 project. And that work will be funded through the budgeted wastewater funds that we had planned for that project. And with that, I will pass it to Brian to talk about the assessment. Sorry, I jumped ahead here.
Yep, good, all right. We'll go back. So, yeah. All right, I'm going to briefly touch on the assessment portion of this project, because as you're well aware of, we were before you guys just this past month to have the levying of the 2024 PMP assessment rule. There is an assessment associated with the reconstruct projects here in Bloomington. The city's policy has been in place since 1962. It utilizes an adjusted front footage as the basis for the assessment amount. So per state statute, we're required to provide an estimated assessment to properties that are subject to a potential assessment if the project is ordered, which we did send out in October here. And that estimated assessment was based on the adjusted front footage of each parcel, multiplied by the rate of the improvements that they were subject to an assessment for, and we gave them an estimated amount. If the project is ordered, obviously, we would calculate that final assessment amount next fall, as Christian mentioned, be back before you with an assessment rule for your consideration for levying next September, October. So for the 2025 101, the estimated assessments that were provided were based on estimated cost of construction. There are two subject, two improvements that are subject to an assessment with the 2025 101. Those were surfacing and curb and gutter. Up here, you can see the estimated rounded amounts for the estimated costs for both of those improvements. Then the total adjusted front footage, those are the parcels that would be subject to an assessment for that particular improvement. You'll notice that there's different, the adjusted front footage for the surfacing is larger than for curb and gutter. That's because in Bloomington here, we assess for curb and gutter at its initial installation. So we do have some segments that are being considered this evening that don't have curb and gutter currently. So those parcels are subject to an assessment for curb and gutter. The streets that already have curb and gutter in place are not assessed for that curb and gutter a second time, they are just simply assessed for the surfacing. So all streets or all parcels adjacent to streets being considered for reconstruction are subject to a surfacing assessment. So you can see how the rates are calculated there, so it's taking the total cost of that improvement divided by the total adjusted front footage of all the parcels, so of all 13 segments that are being before you this evening, and you get 100% rate. So that'd be the rate that we need to charge to pay for that improvement 100% through assessments to adjacent parcels. In Bloomington, we assess at two different rates, 25% rate for single two and three family, a 50% rate for all other properties, and you can see where those rates are right there. So the estimated assessments that were provided to the residents took the improvement multiplied by their AFF, and that's how they got their estimated assessments that provided to them in October. This graphic here just shows comparisons to neighboring communities and This, this graphic here just shows comparisons to neighboring communities and how special assessments are applied to help pay for a portion of, if not a total, of 100% of the improvements here. So you can kind of see how Bloomington relates to other, you know, peer communities around here. I will note, Edina, that they were 100% rate for many years. They're in the process of a 16-year transition from using a special assessments to a, a street improvement fee that all properties will pay regardless of whether the street's being approved or not. So throughout those next 16 years, we'll see that percentage go down, and then they will institute an actual fee that all properties will pay regardless of whether or not they're being, their street's being reconstructed. So you can kind of see where, how we compare to our peer communities on this graphic here. And lastly, I just want to talk about if the project is ordered this evening and parcel is subject to an assessment. As Christian mentioned, we will have, the project will be designed this winter, go out for bid, and then next September, we would send out the final assessment notices to those properties. That would be based on the actual bid costs and construction costs to date. And then we would hold public hearings, we'd have informational meetings, again, to explain the final assessment bills that were sent out. At that time, residents that were, are being assessed would receive a detailed bill that would show the improvements they're being assessed for, broken down, line item, the AFF, the adjusted front footage that was applied, as well as the rate that was applied to show them how the final assessment was calculated. And then we'd be before you again to ask you for the levying of the assessment roll. If the assessment is levied, property owners would have an opportunity to prepay a portion of that with no interest applied up to November 26 of 2025. Any remaining balance that isn't prepaid during that amount would automatically be rolled onto the property taxes. So the first time that someone would see a bill for this project, if it were to be ordered this evening, and they were assessed and chose not to prepay any amount, would be about 18 months from now, or with their May of 2026 property tax statement. And if they were let that, and then that is spread out evenly over 10 years, so if they were to let that roll through the entirety of that assessment, the last payment would be in October of 2035. They do have an option to pay off that balance in full. Prior to that, if it does go onto the property taxes, and we can talk more about that in the fall if the project is ordered and they are assessed. Last thing I want to point out is there's a hardship deferral opportunity for those who qualify, so there's nothing that needs to be done at this point. So if you are subject to an assessment, when that assessment is actually levied, if you meet the criteria, you can have that assessment deferred. It is not a forgiveness of the assessment, but rather a deferral. So at that point, we can have that conversation. If you're interested in that, no action needs to be taken now, and actually can't be taken until the assessment is actually levied, so not until next October. But I wanted to make people aware of that, so there is an option for that if you do qualify. And you do need to meet all the criteria to qualify. Just a quick summary of the property owner contact we've had to date. So we did send out the estimated assessment, we held informational meetings and notice of public hearing, which were sent out on October 21st. We held two informational meetings over at Public Works on 11/6, on Wednesday, November 6th. And then, since then, we've had questions, we've responded to questions via email and phone prior to tonight's meeting, and we'll continue to do so afterwards as well. We do have information, the informational slides that were presented at those public meetings are available on the city website, on the PMP page, if anyone wants to go and see those for more detail about the project. But we have been in contact with property owners, we'll continue to be in contact with property owners if the project is ordered this evening. Lastly, just to recap, as Christian mentioned before, the PMP program is the right action at the right time. The reason we do this, it prolongs the pavement life, it reduces the overall cost of maintaining that infrastructure for the city and its residents, and it helps maintain the city's infrastructure to a rate and a level that we're, that the residents expected, that staff expects as well. So with that, we do have a recommended motion for your consideration, and Christian and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, and yes, we have seen this more than once, but I do think it's, it's important to, to give this presentation in its entirety to let folks know exactly what this program is and what it stands for, and what the goals are of the program, and how successful it's been as well. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Loman?
Just two real, real quick ones, Mayor. When making that move from the nine miles down to eight, and if you don't have the answer, I can take it offline, I'm wondering if there'll be any impacts to the, the assessment of that calculation? Will it be, we think will be, I know there's other things that drive, that are drivers as well, but do you think there'll be any impact at all from going that nine to eight?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, Mr. Mayor, council member. So we do do the analysis prior to, so we compare the assessment rates, the estimated rates to previous years to make sure they're in line with what we would expect. So that was, and we did look at that, and both the surfacing and curb and gutter at this point, the estimated rates were within a dollar of two of what we had last year. So it was comparable or in line with what we'd expect to see, so.
Excellent, I'm glad you guys did that. My other question is, you brought up Edina, that's one of the ones I like to utilize, but my question would be, has staff reviewed that at all? You know, because they're kind of going from one end to another end, to see what the pluses and minuses are, and if that's an approach that might be possible for us, and I know it's more of a policy question, but I'm just kind of curious if you've looked into it at all.
As staff, I have not personally looked into it, I'm familiar with what they're doing. I think, as you mentioned, that's more of a policy question, but I have not looked into that in more detail about how that could be applied to Bloomington, if that was something that was to be considered, so.
Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the one thing I saw was that there's a large section of 84th that's getting redone, and I know, was it last year, large section of 86, right, by the areas redone? What do we do to try to reduce kind of the, 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 just the, the work that gets done there and the inconvenience to people, so that we're not inconveniencing one section of the city all the time?
Mr. Mayor, council, Mayor Mua, so when we were approaching this project, we tried to look at it from like, so we look at the maintenance history for that area, we also kind of think about all the, like, a complete street approach, right? Like the, all the projects and utility work that needs to happen in the area, so we can keep the disturbance to one year. So that's why you noticed that a large section of 86 was redone, and then now 84th is also part of that. So we, we look at all the maintenance history and then just kind of keep all the projects in one area. And sometimes that involves being in one area for, you know, like, a couple of years, but then we don't return there for another 15 to 20 years. So that's kind of how we approach it. I don't know if that answers your question.
Perfect, thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? If not, let's get to the public hearing. Gentlemen, thank you. Don't go far, I'm sure we might have additional questions for you as well. I will open the public hearing on item four point four. This is a public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2025 pavement management program, street reconstruction project. Is there anyone here in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point four this evening? If you are, please come forward. And as you're coming forward, I'll, I'll explain how we do this here. We're going to need you to identify yourself and ultimately sign in, just so we have, we know who you are. We limit speakers to five minutes, and we put it up on the big shot clock on the wall. And when we get to the end of five minutes, if you're not done, I will cut you off, not because I'm mean, but because I want to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time, and we don't give benefit or preference to somebody. So as you're making your comments, if you just keep an eye on the clock and make sure you keep it under five minutes, and we will be on our way.
Okay, I'm writing down, so don't start it yet.
Okay, all right.
Do I need to put my address here, too?
Yeah, you can fill in after you're, after you've made your comments, we can go there. And then into the microphone, so we can pick you up on TV, and off we go. Good evening and welcome.
So my name is Dawn, and I live on 90th and Elliott. It's actually my, and my address is Chicago, and I have a lot and a half house, and so I'm on, and I'm on the corner, and there are four houses that are lots and a half that are next to me. We are one of the fewest that have a curb at all. We've never had curbs on our lot, or on our, on our street. I've called the, I've called the city every spring for six years, and I've just been asked, like, are you guys gonna, are you just looking at this? Are you, is it, are we in the project future? So I've been very, and in, and during our neighborhood watch, night, or neighborhood, or night watch, we get together and we talk about that. And, I mean, I think I'm just here myself, representing my whole block, but we're all for it, and we're waiting for it, and in the front of my driveway is, there's just chunks of tar that, you know, you got the garbage trucks coming by, and yeah, it's...
Well, thanks for being here tonight. And just, just to clarify, so, pardon me for, for not knowing exactly, but is your street part of the pavement management program proposal tonight? So it, it is, okay. And then we, we will be adding curb and gutter, I'm assuming, then, so.
Yes.
So you're in luck, is what I'm hearing, that...
I hope so, if you're...
Yeah. Yes, okay.
So that's all I wanted to say.
So you're speaking in favor of it, is what I, you're speaking in favor of the project?
Yes.
Very good. Good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Anyone else wishing to speak to item four point four this evening? Do we have anyone online or on the phone who wishes to speak?
We do have several folks online. Please press star six to unmute yourself if you would like to speak on this agenda No one is unmuting themselves? Oh, oh, sorry, I want some, six one two, ending in four six, you unmuted yourself? Go ahead and speak.
Hi there, this is Mike Rodman. I'm over on 12th Avenue. I guess I'm slated for the curb and gutter thing and street pavement. I just got, well, first of all, I don't have the money to pay for it, and I, even if we put, you know, a 10-year plan on it, there's interest involved with that as well. So the cost of that is very, very high for me, and I'm very worried about the cost of it. And also, I just got my driveway done about two years ago, and I just paid for that. And then there's, we've had Michael's Construction up and down 12th Avenue that has been putting, you know, they've been doing maintenance on the street. They've done a horrible job replacing what they've been doing. So is this just to fix Michael's problems, or what? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak here in the chambers? If you're willing to speak, come on up. We'll answer questions as we, as we wrap up at, at the end, okay? Good evening.
My name is Mary Jo.
Mary Jo, if you could speak into the microphone, so we can get you there.
I have lived in Bloomington since I was four years old, okay? We have lived at our property right now a few years over 55, okay? Everything's been fine, except for the last few years, the taxes have been horrible, horrible. And I just got our last thing, and it went up $250 from last year. For what? I don't know for what. We are on 84th and 14th, we're on that 84th thing, and then we get a bill for over $4,000. We have curb, we have gutter, we have sewer. All we need is a road, and it just seems a little bit farfetched as to what we're being charged for all of this.
I appreciate your comments. What, what we like to do, I will take your comments, and then we will address the comments of everyone, answer quick questions after we wrap up the, the public hearing, so. But I appreciate your comments, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? We do have one more person online.
Yep, number 5154, ending in four two. Caller 5154, ending in four two, did you want to speak on this agenda item? You're unmuted.
All right. Last call for anyone in the council chambers? Yes, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kate Kleinfeldter. A few of us here are off of 99th and 10th, so we're within some of the reconstruction. We have no curb and gutter. I think we're a little confused about the payment, and also about, is it happening in '25, and first payment is due in '26? Or if, it said something about the interest payments, but now it said it went on to the property taxes. So I believe we're a little bit confused as to how all of that is really supposed to pan out if you are unable to make the lump sum.
Very good.
And also, I think, when the lump sum is due.
Sure.
Okay.
And again, we'll answer, we'll answer the questions as we close the...
Thank you.
And if need be, if you have additional questions, these gentlemen will be more than happy to, to talk to you out in the hall and answer any and all questions you might have.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Counsel, no one on the phone unless we, we have, anyone unmuted yet? Nope, okay, so no one on the phone, and we've heard from a few folks, but no one else coming forward within the council chambers here. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point four, our public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2025 pavement management program, street reconstruction project.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item four point four. No further council discussions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing. We had a few questions here. Mr. Inago, you were, you were stepping up to, to answer at least one of them, I think. Please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we had a question from a gentleman on 12th Avenue who was wondering if this work was to repair the work that was done by Michael's. To Councilmore, Councilmember Mua's point, when we were approaching this project, ahead of our work, Center, well, CenterPoint Energy comes in and do, they, they look at the gas infrastructure and try to plan and do any, any work and maintenance that's needed, so that they don't come through after we're done with reconstructions to tore up a brand-new street. And then their work is completely separate from our work. We're, we're, we're doing this work regardless of the work that CenterPoint is doing. And, and to answer the question from the gentleman as well, when he's asking if this work is needed, yes, we've assessed the surface condition of the pavement, and it falls right in that typical reconstruction range that we would look into, to do a reconstruction on, so.
Thank you much. Brian, perhaps you could address the, the questions on the, the timing and, and how that all works out?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, there was a question regarding the, the timing of the assessment and the bill, and when that would be due if the project is ordered. So kind of the way this works is, tonight, we're before you for the ordering of the project. If the council orders the project, we'll go ahead, like I said, and bid that, we'll have a final cost. The final bill will be sent out in September of 2025, and that'll be the final amount. So that'll be the amount that'll be due pending the levying of the assessment, again, by the council, we'll be back before you in October. So for any resident that has that bill, there's no payment can be made until the actual assessment is levied. Typically, that's the first council meeting in October. And then from that date until November 26 of 2025, residents would have the opportunity to pay off the assessment in full if they choose to. They can pay off a portion of it if they want to during that open window, a minimum of $100 payment, up to the total amount, you don't have to pay that. Whatever balance is remaining after November 26 is automatically rolled onto the property taxes. So if a resident were to not pay, prepay any portion, or only pay a portion of that, any remaining balance automatically gets rolled onto the property taxes. So then, the first time they would see a bill for that, if they chose not to prepay or still had a balance remaining, would be with that May of 2026 property tax statement. So the first time you have an opportunity to pay would be in the fall of 2025. The project, if ordered, would be constructed in 2025. Payment would be available in 2025 with the first payment, required payment if no prepayment was made, would be in 2026. And I should mention, too, the interest rate for this project would be five and a half percent. So that would be the rate that would be applied annually to the declining principle over the 10 years of that assessment, if it weren't to be paid off in full. That five and a half percent would be applied annually to that declining principle over the life of that assessment, so. And if any residents have questions regarding what, and at this point, too, I should mention that the amount that was given to all the residents is an estimated assessment, so like I said, we would dial that in. We are typically pretty conservative on our estimated assessments, we try to give kind of the higher end. There's no guarantees that the final assessment will be below the estimated assessment that was provided to date, but we tend to be on the more conservative side, because we want to provide kind of that higher end. So hopefully, we can come in a little below that when we actually bid the project. So if residents have questions or want to know what the rates would, or what the payments would look like with their property taxes based on the estimated assessment, or if they wanted to see, hey, if I paid X amount of dollars, what would that look like over those 10 years and the interest applied? I can provide that. I have a spreadsheet I can put together for them. So feel free to reach out to me there after the meeting or if you're watching online or reach out to me via email or give me a call and I can provide that information as well.
Thank you. Yep. And call, email or hallway meetings, all work. We, you, you can, you can certainly talk to them if you have additional questions. There was another question about the, the cost of this and the cost of the, the taxes in the city of Bloomington and so on. Probably more appropriate for our truth and taxation hearing, which is coming up in December. But I know that folks just received their preliminary levy statements, the tax levy statements. And this, that includes everything from the city and the school district and the county and the soil and water conservation district and so on. Uh, I will say the, the increase that we are considering for the city of Bloomington, uh, once again focuses a majority of which focuses on public safety in the city of Bloomington. And we have heard this for years from people that public safety is the top priority. So, uh, what is it? Is it sixty percent, I believe, would go to police and fire, public safety within the city? And that's two things. That's, uh, that's police. And we have heard time and again, the importance of public safety and not just being safe, but feeling safe within our community. And we were making, we continue to make investments in our police department to ensure that's the case within the city of Bloomington. And in terms of fire, uh, you know, I, I, I tell so many people from, who are not from the city of Bloomington, that I mentioned to them that, uh, we don't, we, we are just transitioning to a combination full-time fire department. And the look on their face, they are shocked that Bloomington, a city of ninety-one thousand dollars, or ninety-one thousand dollars, ninety-one thousand people, ninety-one thousand people does not have a full-time fire department yet. We are making that transition because it's, um, it's, it's an absolute necessity in the city of our size, uh, from a public safety standpoint. It's, it's an absolute necessity with the, the businesses that we have in town, with our hospitality industry, with our high tech industry, to not have a full-time fire department. In my mind is a bit, would be negligent, counsel. And so this council has made the, has made the commitment that we will have a full-time fire department in the city of Bloomington. And, um, to do that requires tax dollars. And we are all paying for it. All of us, all of us are paying for that because it's been a commitment identified by the citizens and the residents of Bloomington. So, and just in general, uh, our, our, our general fund in the city of Bloomington, eighty-five percent of the tax dollars that are collected go to the nuts and bolts things of city government. Police, fire, public works, that's snow plowing and potholes fixing and, and doing all the work. Community development, trying to make sure our business community is strong and remains strong. So we attract and retain our businesses. And parks and recreation. So, uh, keeping the parks in good shape, updating them where necessary, providing the, uh, the, the, um, programming in the summer, eighty-five percent of our budget goes to those five things. And that is basically the nuts and bolts of city government. What's the expectation? And we keep hearing from city residents, they're expecting services and that's what we're working to deliver. So that's a long answer to your short question and I, I appreciate you bringing it forward and, uh, appreciate to continue the, uh, the conversation on this because it's an important conversation to have. But I think it's an important understanding about what we're trying, uh, what, what the, the decisions we make. And I know we don't, none of the folks up here take those decisions lightly, but the decisions that we make that impact all of us, all residents of Bloomington, uh, in so many different ways, uh, we do them with, with the best interest of the community in mind. So that's again, a long answer to your short question. And so thanks much for asking it.
See, Mayor.
Were there, were there any questions asked during the public hearing that I, that I didn't answer? Council member Lowman?
There was just one other aspect of that. I think you did a great job of that, but there was one point of clarification that she had brought forward around the curb and gutter. It almost sounded as if she's being double charged for that because she already had existing curb and gutter. I wonder if you'd talk a little bit more about that part of it.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor, council member. So, um, without looking at the property in particular, but I know that there is curb and gutter already in place along eighty-fourth Street. So, um, the assessment that she would, or the improvement that she would be subject to an assessment for would be the surfacing itself. And that would be in line with roughly the four thousand dollars that she mentioned is what her estimated assessment was. So she would just be, and anyone else along that stretch that already had curb and gutter in place and was already assessed for curb and gutter previously, the parcel was, would only be subject to an assessment for that surfacing improvement.
Is that being charged for an additional curb and gutter?
Correct.
This is now just straight up surface?
Correct. Yep. The only properties being assessed for curb and gutter are those that don't currently have curb and gutter in place.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right. I think that was all the questions. I think we answered all the, the questions from the public hearing. Counsel, any questions since the public hearing or, or comments or clarifications? Council member Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to provide a comment, um, specifically because I just had my street redone last year. And so I just went through this process and it is confusing. You get your assessment and it's like four thousand, five thousand dollars. And my wife and I looked at each other and said, okay, we can't do our chimney anymore. But it's, that's not what it ends up being because there are additional things that our staff does. There's a special needs assessment that goes in there. So like by the time you get your final bill in the fall, it is completely different than what you got last week. So I just want to let folks know that this is a process. It will evolve. Our staff is very accommodating and very open. They answer a lot of my questions, not because I was a council member, because I was a resident who was questioning what was going on and wanted to get understanding. Um, and then as the process goes on, our staff continues to stay very engaged in what's going on. We know that it's a disturbance to your life. We know that it causes a lot of, um, changes that you have to deal with. For me, my kids loved it. They had bulldozers in front of our house for, you know, six weeks. And so they're very happy about that. But it was something we had to get used to. And as we went on and if there were any issues in particular, we could call staff and they were very responsive. Our staff were out there almost on an everyday basis to make sure that the work that's being done is being done correctly. So that if Michaels or whoever gets bid to do the work, if they're not doing their job correctly, our city staff is making sure that they're correcting it and fixing it. So that by the time they leave, your street is new and clean and clear. And my children in particular have loved it for skateboarding and scooters and everything like that. So it has been a fantastic program that I've seen. Although it does take a little bit to understand exactly what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, exactly what it's going to cost. But at the end of the day, you're going to have a brand new street that's going to be good for the next seventy years. And so I have neighbors who have lived in the same house for fifty years and said, this is the first time they've come back to redo our street. And so that's what I want to see is in fifty years when I'm retired and in that house, that, that's when it's going to happen again is in fifty, sixty years, not in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so, um, highly encourage you to reach out to our staff if you continue to have questions, continue to have concerns about this. Very open, very, um, willing to sit down and talk with you to make sure you're comfortable and confident about what exactly is going to happen next year. But from what I've experienced, it's, uh, ends up being, uh, really great and, uh, you're going to really enjoy a new road for, for a long time.
Council member Mua? Counsel, any additional questions, comments? We've held the public hearing. We had an opportunity to talk. Counsel, I would consider action on this. Council member Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. Be happy to do that. I'd move to adopt a resolution ordering the twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, zero, one pavement management program, street reconstruction project reference, street, uh, project, street references, numbers one through thirteen.
Second.
Motion by council member Mua, second by council member Lowman to approve the resolution to approve the feasibility study and order the twenty twenty-five pavement management program, street reconstruction project. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you much, gentlemen. And, and thank you for the, to the residents for your questions, for your comments, for your concerns. I know that, uh, this is not a, uh, if, if it's in front of your house, I know it's, it's a disruption and I know it's not a small bill either. And so I appreciate, uh, the, the, what you're, what you're going to be going through, but I, I do think that ultimately it's in, in the best interest of the city in general. So thank you. We will move on to item four point five. This is another public hearing and this is regarding a resolution to approve the feasibility study and order the twenty twenty-four Normandale Boulevard PMP trail and sidewalk improvement projects. Mr. Simons, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. If I could get the presentation. Perfect. Thank you. Yes, we're here tonight for ordering of another construction project, our Normandale Boulevard PMP trail and sidewalk improvement project. I'm Bob Simons, as the mayor mentioned, and, uh, I'm a senior civil engineer in our street design and infrastructure area of Bloomington. I'll be the project engineer for this project. Looks like I'm going to have the same problems Christian did.
There you go. It's my fault.
Okay. There we go. All right. Back up one. There we go. All right. Where is this project located? It's located on Normandale Boulevard, um, north limits being Ninety-fourth Street, south limits being Old Shock B Road. A little bit of project history and property owner contact that's occurred for this project. This has actually been a project that's been in the works for, for quite some time, back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. As part of the citywide neighborhood engagement for the alternative transportation plan update that was being done. There was some, a wide range of engagement strategies that were used to get direct feedback from residents in the area. And one of the things that came out of that was a strong support for upgrade and expansion of the off-road facilities along Normandale Boulevard. Staff began to start looking at layouts for the, for this area in fall of twenty nineteen. City council had received a lot of conversation from the residents in the area. Uh, asking about, um, improvements to be made along Normandale Boulevard. City council at that time directed staff to prioritize Normandale Boulevard for the corridor for biking and walking. Then from that point, staff continued to look at some preliminary layouts and in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, began applying for multiple grants through the Safe Roots to School process, as well as the Met Council's regional solicitation process. In the spring of twenty twenty-two, um, as we were in the process of, of applying for different grants, um, uh, staff reached out to, with a direct mailing, Let's Talk Bloomington page was put forward and other avenues were used to contact residents in the area and gather feedback and walking and biking along the corridor. At that, during that time, a resident survey was put out when asking residents on what their preferred design would be for the sidewalks and trails along Normandale Boulevard. And the results of that were that a multi-use trail on the west side and a concrete sidewalk on the east side was the preference from the folks in the area. And actually, when looking at constructability of the facilities in the area, it's more conducive to that approach with a, a larger, uh, trail on the west, east, west side and a sidewalk on the east side, just based on exist, some existing ponds and steep hillsides in the area. Then in May and September of twenty twenty-four, after applying for multiple grants, we were successful in obtaining a Safe Roots to School grant and also a Met Council grant in the carbon reduction category. Just previously here this past June, we came to city council to order the feasibility report for the project. Then in October, we held a, um, contacted the residents in the neighborhood once again. Held a neighborhood open house. We reached out to, what, thirty-three hundred properties in the area, inviting them to the open, an open house. Let's Talk Bloomington page, used other avenues as well, um, outlets to, to get information out to folks about both that open house and the public hearing. Open House was held on October twenty-ninth. Uh, there was about twenty-five attendees at the open house and comment cards and correspondence from that are included in your packet. At the open house, we felt that residents felt they were very, they were very excited for the improvements to the, the walks and the trails along the corridor. There were some questions that did come up with concerns about tree removal and fences in the area, how they were going to be impacted. We'll be working directly with those folks as we move for the project if, if and when it's ordered. Looking at how we can mitigate those things as best we can. Um, and now we're here tonight for the, the public hearing. A little bit on project need. Anybody that's been down Normandale Boulevard sees the project need. There is narrow walks, narrow boulevards, some walks down to three foot or less in width. All of very narrow boulevards, really close adjacent to the existing curb on a very heavily traveled roadway. Aging conditions, low PCI values for the walks, non-ADA compliant facilities along the entire corridor. It's just an uncomfortable situation for those using the corridor, safety and PED mobility concerns. And I should note that this, um, um, is identified in our, as a priority in our Safe Roots to School, active transportation, alternative transportation and ADA transition plans. A few of the, a few of the design highlights, uh, as I mentioned, multi-use path installation on the west side of Normandale Boulevard. Uh, sidewalk installation on the east side of Normandale Boulevard. And this would tie in to, as you remember from a few years ago, when we did Ninety-eighth and Normandale Boulevard intersection improvement. We got ourselves set up for a future project in that area as well. It'll include some retaining wall replacement and installation to accommodate the PED facilities, upgrading pedestrian crossings and ADA compliant ramps, APS that signalize intersections, um, installation of wayfinding along the corridor. And a few, uh, modify, intersection modifications, which I'll, I'll get to in a second here, but one of those being at the intersection of Highland Greens Drive. And then some turn lane installations on a hundred and second street and both at Ninety-fourth, or turn lane modifications at Ninety-fourth and, uh, southbound Normandale Boulevard at Old Shock B Road. Design highlights, what the cross sections would look like with the current, what, what we, what we'd currently be proposing. It'd be that ten-foot path on the west side, six-foot walk on the east side with a separated boulevard from the curb to the walk and the trail. You see in the upper left, an example of what a retaining wall being installed to reduce impacts and replace existing taint walls in need of repair along the corridor. On the, one on the right, um, just the regular ten-foot path, six-foot walk. And then the lower left, uh, locations along the east side of Normandale Boulevard, north and south of a hundred and second street, we have a few wetlands. So we'd be looking to install some sheet pile retaining wall to stay out of the wetland and reduce the impacts to the adjacent properties. Now, when talking about some of those intersection highlights, on the left, you see the Highland Greens Drive, Normandale Highlands Drive intersection. Um, and this was actually brought up by a number of folks at the, at the, um, engagement event recently as well about, um, the issues with that intersection, site visibility, safety concerns. So we'd be looking at some modifications, possibly going to a three-quarter intersection. So it'd be right in, right out and left in. Working with the county on that, on the configuration of that intersection. And then also in the upper right, you see the hundred and second street, westbound, right turn lane to go northbound on Normandale Boulevard. Another item that's been discussed for a number of years, um, amongst staff, um, and looking for the project to incorporate it, it with it, with. And this is a good project based on scope to be incorporating it with. This would accommodate both current and future needs on a hundred and second street. I know there's discussion of a hundred and second, continued hundred and second street studies. This is based off of previous hundred and second street studies and will, will, will follow suit well with any, any additional study work that would be done. And any lane configuration changes, we'll be looking at that when we install this as well. And then you see in the lower right, up on the north limits of the project, uh, eastbound Ninety-fourth Street to, uh, southbound Normandale Boulevard. Right now it's that large sweeping right turn lane. We'd be looking to modify that to improve PED and, uh, mobility, um, um, usage in the area as well as traffic safety, more of a yield condition. We did the very similar thing on the northeast corner of this when we reconstructed Normandale Boulevard back in twenty seventeen. And then not pictured here, southbound Old Shock B, or excuse me, southbound Normandale Boulevard to take the right and head westbound on Old Shock B Road, we're looking at possibly reducing the length of that turn lane based on the existing needs and also to reduce impacts to the adjacent properties. And we're looking at doing an intersection analysis to see if that is, uh, um, if it's conducive to that. That was working well for me. Good. All right. Uh, with this project, as is typical for any sidewalk, most sidewalk and trail projects, be looking at some right-of-way acquisitions, some permanent and temporary easements, working directly with the property owners that are adjacent to the project with this. We have about twenty-six parcels that would be in need of, um, some minor sidewalk, bikeway or retaining wall easements. And then about fifteen parcels that would need temporary easements for construction, just to grade back into the, into the property for the work that we're doing with the trails and the walks. We're in the process of hiring a consultant currently to aid in this right-of-way acquisition. And if this project is moved forward, we would come forward with a, a contract for a consultant to aid in this right-of-way acquisition. In regards to project costs, overall construction costs, I'm looking at adding in a, uh, construction contingency and project admin costs as long as, as well as that easement, easement acquisition. It's about nine point eight million dollars. We have a few different funding sources in play. Hennepin County is looking to contribute a half a million dollars. I should mention sidewalks and trails along county roads, you know, Normandale Boulevard is a county road, but sidewalks and trails adjacent to county roads are the city's responsibility. But the county is looking to, to, um, um, supply this half a million dollars to help with those, the intersection improvement work and just the project in general. So that work at Highland Greens Drive and the other intersection work, this five hundred thousand dollars would go a long way in helping with that. And then also, as I mentioned, we received those state and federal grants, almost two point seven million. And the remainder of the costs would be funded through our franchise fees, our PMP right-of-way trails franchise fees and state aid. All of these are budgeted amounts that we, that we have in place, um, for this project. As I mentioned, this project's been in the works for, for some time now. No proposed assessments to the adjacent properties for the project. And I should also mention, as included in part of the legislative agenda, legislative platform, there is a state bonding request, a recommendation from the city for four and a half million dollars, um, for this project that would help with the costs, of course, if that was, um, approved or moved forward. Next steps, um, we'll do, we'll continue with environmental documentation process here in late twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as part of the federal grants. We have to do a project memorandum and look at environmental aspects of the project. Easement offers and negotiations would occur in twenty twenty-five. And then we look to complete design by the fall and then possibly starting construction in late fall, but most likely in spring of twenty twenty-six and completing in, in, uh, twenty twenty-seven. And with that, that is all I have for you. Um, I know it's a public hearing, so I'll wait for any questions you might.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Counsel questions of Mr. Simons on this one? No? All right. Thank you much. Don't go far. We'll see if we do have questions on this. We will open the public hearing on item four point five now. This is a public hearing regarding a resolution to approve feasibility study and to order the twenty twenty-four Normandale Boulevard PMP trail and sidewalk improvement project. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point five this evening? Good evening. Just come forward and, and same, the same rules apply. Identify yourself the whole five minutes, sign the, sign yourself in after you're done speaking. So the whole bit.
Perfect. Will do. I was listening. First city council meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, yes. So my name is Megan Hinterland. I live right on Normandale Boulevard. So I'm highly impacted by this project. But I just wanted to state how in support of it I am. I moved in in twenty nineteen and I've been hearing about this since the very beginning. So it's long overdue. I hope that you all are looking at it favorably. It is part of the Mayor Tim Bucy Adopt a Highway section. And council member Nelson, I walk by your house all the time with my dogs, mostly because Normandale's not walkable. Not that I don't enjoy seeing Smidge. So, um, yeah, it's really important, especially with the state, funding e-bike giveaways and all that and knowing that it's one of the biggest corridors along with France and Lyndale here in Bloomington, that really shows off what green spaces we have. So, um, just thinking of all the green space that's about to be highlighted through this project, that would be really helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, it's the entire family. It's not just me because I got in trouble with Hennepin County for that. So just so we're clear, it's. I got in trouble with Hennepin County for that. So just so we're clear, it's the entire the entire Bussy family. Anyone else wishing to speak to item 4.5? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.5?
There are people online, Mayor, some on the phone, some on the screen. If you're on phone, please hit star six. Nobody is on mute.
All right. Last call for anyone in the chambers to speak to item 4.5. Council, no one on the phone, no one coming forward after our first speaker on item 4.5. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.5.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muasek and by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.5. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Council, any questions on this? This is Council Councilmember Dalisandro and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thanks. Quick clarifying question if I could, Bob. It it you said it goes the entire length of Normandale? So so I know that there's a section where Normandale goes to the southwest and it becomes Auto Club Road, right, right there? And I believe there's an entryway to the, I'm looking at the satellite map here, there's an entryway off of, what street is that? Yeah, where Normandale Boulevard kind of terminates. Is there is there an entrance to the the River Valley and the Minnesota River Bottoms there, isn't there? Is there or is there not?
And I don't believe it goes that far. Councilmember, or excuse me, Mr. Simons, could you clarify exactly where the southern terminus is of this project?
Councilmember Dalisandro, the southern terminus of this project is on at Old Chalkaby Road.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. When I said the entire length of Normandale, it isn't then, is the que- that was my first question.
Correct.
Okay. So so these are the, that's great. Okay, that's all I really needed to know. I I'm just trying to continue to to think more broadly. Again, what I what I hesitate to do always is like build a section of a trail and like not not let people get all the way where they're trying to go. So this is great, you know, for people who want to go, like, let's say they come out of Norman Ridge and they want to go to, like, you know, North Star, and then they go back home, like, that's going to be great, right? If they're actually trying to traverse, you know, the length of Nine Mile Creek, or they're trying to go, you know, across from Edina or even from, I mean, I think you can get all the way from Minnetonka on trails, you know, into Bloomington and everything, and then get onto the River Bottoms or whatever, we've kind of stopped them. We've like, erp, sorry, terminates way before your destination. So I guess I love this project and I'm going to support it. That's not the point I'm making. It's just that I want to be sure that we are thinking about these things. It took 10 years to get this portion of the project here, as we continue to try to push forward for more biking and trail capability and everything like that, being forthright about thinking through how we actually connect all of these trails and make them make them easy thoroughfares for bike riders, I think is going to be an important thing to consider. So I don't know how long we're going to have to wait until we see the the next section of it, if we ever plan to do it or whatever. But, you know, I I just, I want us to, I want us to be more circumspect, I guess, I, you know, with this stuff. And having said all that, I guess, Baba, it's probably not a comment, it's more of a comment than a question after all, but now that you've told me where it's terminating, I think we want to think about what whether or not Normandale should can, we should continue this trail down to Normandale and connect it at the River Bottoms at some point.
Thanks for the comments, Councilmember.
Thanks.
And some of us are old enough to remember when this was from 84th down to 98th Street, that project that went on for for a couple of summers. And then we waited for this now to complete it. And so, yes, it's a matter of resources and time, I guess, incremental. Yep. So, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'm strongly in favor of this project. As we heard, it is very close to my house, so and my neighbors and myself see tremendous benefit in this. I appreciate staff looked at this because I know we looked at bike trails on both sides, like there are more north. We looked at bike trail on one side, sidewalk on one side. And I appreciate that you looked at how to meet the needs most economically in the area and so that it could endure and last a long time to, so one question, I'm assuming that there aren't plans for the county to make major changes to the road at this time. They're not doing a road improvement. We're just doing the trail and sidewalk. Is that accurate?
Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Nelson, that is accurate, yes. And we actually reached out to the county beforehand along the entire process, just to make sure they didn't have any plans in the near future, and they don't in nearer future, so.
Good. I appreciate bringing that up because that was my follow-up question of like, because we know on the northern part, they have a nice, you know, center median landscaping and why in the road, but I didn't want to have to redo anything later. So I think you addressed that. And then to Councilmember Dalisandro's point, I I agree with you. And the only caveat that I would put is I would continue to take a look at the Old Chalkaby area, because I think if you could connect trails from Nesbit over to somewhere around France, you'd be able to connect up other local connections. There are bike facilities off of Nesbit. There are down at Auto Club as well that you could get down to at the Bloomington Frary Bridge area. That connection that you're thinking of for bike access is it's just a big drop-off hill. Like, you can take a bike down there, but but but, yeah, it's not, it's not a very accessible location at that at that spot. So, but anyways, I appreciate this project. I know it's been a long time in the works. I know people are excited about it. I'm excited about it. This is going to be a really nice continuation of what's already been done there. And it's another segment, and we've always talked about we need to connect these segments. So this helps us get there.
If if I could add to one quick thing, the common comment that Councilmember Nelson made in regards to Old Chalkaby Road, we bring up in every opportunity that we can that the improved mobility along Old Chalkaby Road. I know specifically our city engineer brings it up at just about every meeting that we have with the county on looking at improved mobility along Old Chalk. So we're in full agreement with that. So.
Thank you very much. And, you know, just a little anecdote, it's always troubling to me. I know there's an individual that has a motorized wheelchair that utilizes Old Chalkaby, and it's extraordinarily difficult in the snowy season of the year for for that individual to to get over to the kind of the Cub Foods, France Avenue area to do do a shopping and stuff. So it's it's important for a lot of people to be able to have that
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Council, any other questions? If not, council, I would entertain action on item 4.5. Councilmember Nelson. You need to turn on your microphone.
I would move to adopt a resolution to approve the enclosed feasibility study and order improvements for the 2024-110 Normandale Boulevard PMP Trail and Sidewalk Improvement Project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Loman, to approve the feasibility study and order the 2024 Normandale Boulevard PMP Trail and Sidewalk Improvement Project. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Simons. Appreciate it. Moving on to item 4.6, which I think is what we consider the main event here tonight. We've got a lot of folks who are here, I know, concerned about this, and so we will dive right into it. Kenny Niemeyer is going to lead us into item 4.6. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance establishing a housing improvement area and resolution imposing fees regarding the Heights Condominium Association. Mr. Niemeyer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'll just get started and hopefully the slides will come on as we go. But tonight is a request for a housing improvement area. And what we'll go over tonight is what our baseline is for what is a housing improvement area. We'll go through background on this request, which comes from the Heights Condominium Association. We'll examine the financials of the request, and then we'll talk through next steps and, of course, have time for discussion. So I would be showing you a slide that has some of the state statute language related to HIAs. So HIAs are allowed under state statute. They're intended to provide financing for housing associations to make improvements, improvements that could be not that could not be made without an HIA. Oftentimes, HIAs are thought of as the lender of last resort. And so for our HIA policy at the local level, we have a requirement that the HIA must demonstrate that they are rejected from private financing twice. And so that shows just the type of requests that we get when it's an HIA. These projects aren't able to get financing from traditional lenders. So the city, as I mentioned, has a local HIA policy, and it has a requirement that 65% of units must sign a petition in support of the request that comes from that So if you can get me to slide five, please. Or maybe I can get me to slide five. Yeah, that was it. One back, actually. So I'll be showing you a map that shows, yeah, there we are. So this is the project that we're talking about tonight. This is the Heights Condominium, 845 Xerxes Avenue South. And we've brought you this wide view to help illustrate what are the impacts of this project. So I'll go through the timeline next, but you we should understand that the parking ramp on site has been closed. The certificate of occupancy for that structure has been revoked by our Building and Inspections Department. And what that's resulted in is folks that live at the Heights are now parking on street. They're parking on Xerxes Avenue South, and then they're also parking on 81st Street West, and even in some cases, I believe, down to 82nd Street West. So let's see if I can go next slide. Great. Actually, that was backwards. Are we doing it manual? Okay. Can you go to, yeah, timeline. So this request from the Heights, this isn't the first time that this has been brought to the city of Bloomington. The first request came back in 2017, and per our HIA policy, that request is first received by the HRA. So the city council has not been asked to consider this HIA request yet, but the HIA HRA was the the first body to consider this request. So the HRA ruled made a motion to deny the application, and that was on the grounds of the staff recommendation that the financials of that request were too burdensome for residents, and it was likely to result in potentially foreclosure or there not being the ability to repay that financing. So I'll fast forward to the second HIA application. The condo association brought a second application in 2022, which was rejected by the HRA on the same grounds of financial burden. The association came back again in late 2023, and that is the request that we're currently considering tonight. The 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 request was brought to the HRA on October 22nd and was unanimously approved, recommended for approval by the city council. And so we've brought that that request here to you tonight, as well as that recommendation for approval. Next slide, please. So what is that request? It's basically the most limited scope possible for repairs and renovations at the Heights. I want to make clear that the original request back in 2017 was inclusive of a lot of improvements that the property could have used in terms of aesthetic improvements, improvements internal to the residential component of the structure. Staff worked with the applicant to lean out that scope to be what is required to correct building code violations. And so those items are the parking ramp, which has had its certificate of occupancy revoked, as well as the balcony, there are two balconies that have had their certificate of occupancies revoked as well. And so to remedy those violations of building code, those items have been included in the scope that is part of this request. Next slide, please. So this table shows where the sources and uses for this project come from. We show that the construction costs are estimated to be $2 million. We've built in, the applicant has built in a construction cost contingency of 15%. Professional fees are inclusive, and those are to repay the engineer that the applicant has contracted with, the engineer that's prepared that has prepared the plans for renovation of that parking structure. And so that comes to a grand total of 2.5 million for this request. And so on the sources side, we're showing, we have an opportunity to use multiple sources of financing to create a assessment that is the the least financially burdensome for the applicant and for those owners of these units at the Heights. So the way that we've structured or the way that we're proposing to structure is basically the minimum bonding that we can offer that's still marketable, and that's a million dollars. And then we've proposed that the HRA will provide an interfund loan of almost 1.5 million. And that interfund loan carries a lower interest rate, which allows the final assessment to be less expensive for the applicant. And then we've I've highlighted there that tax increment financing is also part of this request. Establishing a TIF district will capture increases of property value. We would then program that TIF revenue to repayment of the bonds, and this would allow for a further decrease of the the payments from those residents or from those owners. I've highlighted what that interest payment would be over the life of the 20-year financing, and it's almost 1.5 million. I do want to call out that if the city receives payment that's in excess of what the the financing costs were, those that excess is returned to the HOA. So on the final line, you can see the rollup for what this monthly per unit assessment ends up being, and it's between 400 and $546, depending on the unit. There are both one beds and two beds. And next slide, please. So the average unit assessment, as I mentioned, here we've got a more granular breakdown of where that average monthly cost would come from. And the monthly cost is illustrative of what the cost will be. The final, the final method for repayment would come through property taxes. So it's a special assessment that gets recorded against the property. And as you know, property taxes are paid twice a year. So I've we've included it as a monthly just for illustration purposes, to help understand what that cost is. Next slide, please. We also wanted to highlight that the this increase, this fee that the owners will be required to pay isn't the only expected increase of costs that that they should anticipate in the coming years. So as part of the applicant's request for an HIA, they were required to have an independent, a third-party prepare a reserve study for the financial management of their property. And what that found was that and what that study proposes is increases to the the housing, the HOA dues year over year for the next 30 years. And you can see it's it's around $30 a year, every year for the next 30 years. Those dues dues increases ensure that future major projects can be paid for by the condo itself, and that we wouldn't be in a situation again where the the condo itself isn't able to pay for these costs. And we've highlighted some of those major projects that were identified in the reserve study, which are they include a main roof replacement and as well as substantial mechanical improvements. Next slide, please. So to give you some analysis on the affordability of this request, we did some calculation on inclusive of all housing costs. What will those, what is the affordability of those housing costs at various income levels? So you can see the rollup of housing costs includes the proposed HIA fee, the current HOA dues, which would be expected to increase, as I mentioned, from the reserve study. It includes property taxes. We've calculated average mortgage costs based off of the recorded certificate of sale price for these houses. And then we're including a base amount for homeowner's insurance. So we call that PITI, principal interest tax and insurance. We're also adding in the HOA dues and the HIA. We found that for households that are earning 60% of the area median income, that PITI, HOA, and HIA housing cost is would be affordable to 80% of those units. If the household is earning 50% of the area median income, only 23% of units would be able to pay that proposed housing cost. Next slide, please. So part of the recommendation from the HRA and staff is to provide a direct income-based assistance program for those households that are earning that those lower area median incomes and who can demonstrate that they are not able to afford those housing costs. We would offer direct assistance potentially through the local Affordable Housing Aid Program, the LHA funding, which the city has begun to receive. And so what we consider an affordable housing cost is all of those costs that I mentioned are 30% or less of your monthly income. So as we're, as we would be qualifying owners for their eligibility for this program, we would look at what is your income and what is your what is your And what is your, what is your housing cost that you will have as a result of this fee? And then we can say any amount that's beyond affordable, this program would finance that gap. Next slide, please. And so I mentioned LHA. This is the proposed funding source for financing of that direct income-based assistance program. So this is the quarter percent sales tax that was passed two legislative sessions ago. And the money has started to roll into the city. The eligible projects are actually quite broad. The basically, it's affordable housing activities. And then the state sets eligible income levels for rental and for ownership projects. And I included a proposed structure for the direct income-based assistance program in the agenda packet. And you'll, you would have seen that the proposed income level is sixty percent AMI, which is far lower than the required level for either rental or ownership at the state level. So we would be going above and beyond in terms of providing assistance to low-income households. So Bloomington has already received half of its twenty twenty-four payments. So it's around two hundred and seventy thousand. In twenty twenty-four, we'll receive the second half in December, next month. And so in total, that will be five hundred sixty thousand. Next year, we anticipate receiving a million dollars, and those come in by annual payments, so in July and December. And then I also wanted to mention that our intent, staff's intent is to have a study session around local affordable housing aid for its strategic use going forward, and we are targeting a December tenth date between both the council and the HRA for that. Next slide, please. So finally, next steps. There are a lot of steps associated with this request, and that's due to the request, the associated financing requests, which include the establishment of a TIF district and bond issuance. So the dates on this slide map out what are all of the actions related to establishing a TIF district and issuing bonds. It does include returning to city council. And that would be to consider final approval of TIF before the HRA gives final approval, and it would be for the city council to consider award of bond proceeds. And then I also wanted to mention, oh, next slide, please. I've included four recommended motions. The first three relate to the HIA request. And the last motion is for the proposed direct income-based assistance program and proposal to fund that program with two hundred and fifty thousand of LHA. And I did want to mention that staff have identified a small technical change that's needed to allow for partial prepayment of the HIA fee. So that gives the these owners the most flexibility in terms of prepaying their fee before interest. And to make that adjustment, we'll need to bring back the technical adjustments. And that's to the fee resolution. And so that concludes my presentation. And there's a questions slide.
Thank you much. Before we get to the public hearing, a couple of quick questions, and then I know that our HRA Chair, Vicky Hukim, would like to speak also. So do we have any quick questions, any clarifying questions for Mr. Nimmer, please?
Yeah, just really quick questions here. Was a complete review of the building done? I think, I think I saw that in there to make sure there aren't any other technical issues. You just got yes or no on that one. All right, great, okay. And then what happens if someone loses their job? Do they become eligible for that LHA grant? Can they get that midway through?
Mayor and council members, so the proposal would be that applications to that program, to that directive-based income-based assistance program would need to take place between the effective date of this resolution and January thirty-first, assuming that that is the effective date. After that date, they would not have the opportunity to apply to that program. So if they
Someone would change their finances. That would be some of that issue. Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Councilmember, I did want to say our building official did go out on site and walk the interior of the building. But the engineer reports that the city has received for the past, every six months for the past several years are specifically on the parking structure. So that third-party engineer hasn't done an assessment of the interior of the building, but our building official has been on site and didn't express concerns to me.
Questions of Mr. Nimmer? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to quickly clarify. Did that inspection or review include the exterior of the building, the building envelope, like the roof, the siding, windows, any potentials for water intrusion, particularly given the state of some of the balconies? Or was it just interior and then the engineers did the parking ramp?
Mayor Councilmembers, the engineer, my, my interpretation of the reports that we've received is that that is inclusive of the exterior because it has been inclusive of these deteriorating balconies that I mentioned. So they have assessed those, and they have identified extensive water infiltration to the parking ramp, which is underneath the structure. So there, there was a, underneath the residential structure. In terms of our building officials' visit, I think her focus was on the interior, since that hadn't received a lot of oversight up until that point.
All right. Thank you. Don't go far. Chair Hukim, would you like to address the council, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just here quick, quickly. And I just wanted to show HRA board support for the residents of the Heights. City staff has worked diligently on this project and with residents directly. And I would like to urge the council to approve this important item this evening. As approval will have a positive impact, not only in our community, but I also believe it's the right choice for the future of continued affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you much. With that, council, I am going to open the public hearing right now on item four point six. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance establishing a housing improvement area and resolution imposing fees regarding the Heights Condominium Association. I'm assuming there's folks here who would like to speak to this. And again, the same the same deal on in terms of the the public hearing. You'll have five minutes. Please identify yourself, and we will save and answer questions at the end of the public hearing, rather than trying to answer your questions piecemeal as we go through it. So is there anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor and councilmembers. I am Patricia Stole. I bought my condo condo unit there in two thousand and seven. I mean, in two thousand and two. I left in about late two thousand and seven, and I've kept it at that time for investment purposes. I've had a renter all along. But then when I went to retire, I went, I was thinking about selling it, and I could not sell it because it was not approved for mortgage. The garage was not approved for mortgage purposes. So I kept renting it, but now my tenant is moving out, and I foresee a problem getting a new tenant with they aren't able to back up to the building to unload furniture, load furniture. They have to carry everything from the street. And I foresee that being a real problem, so I hope and pray this gets approved.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Others? Please.
Okay, yes, good evening. My name is Susan Schubert. I'm also a resident owner in the Heights condominium. I've been there for twelve years. My parents were there before that. And it is hard parking outside. You walk out in the rain, and we're thinking about the cold. When the winter comes, scraping the ice off our cars, it's going to be kind of hard. And walking on ice and all of that sort of thing. I would hope you folks would approve the loan for us to help us out. I know it's going to be kind of pricey and maybe a little bit difficult financially for some of us. But I, I do hope you, you will go ahead and help us in that area. I'd appreciate it very much. Also, also another thing that's really hard when like when I travel, if I leave the state or I leave the country, I have to find someplace to put my car. Because I can't leave it parked on the street for a week to three weeks when I'm gone sometimes. So I'm always having to find a friend where I can leave my car while I'm gone and know that it's safe with my friend. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
I'm Russ Nelson. My wife's brother lives in the Heights in number one oh three. He bought it twenty-four years ago. It's home. He's had multiple surgeries in the past on his legs. He has to walk with a walker. Right now, from his condo door to his spot, handicap spot, the closest spot is a hundred and sixty feet away. With legs being shorter than the other and a walker, that's a long way. The building is not age, you know, ADA compliant. So he's looking forward to having this pass so he can get back and forth. A complicating factor happened a week ago. He was diagnosed with colon cancer. He'll have to go through chemotherapy. It's impossible to get a wheelchair in there without a lot of heavy lifting. So we need to find something for the winter. Last winter was mild. He got around. It's snowy. I don't know what he's going to do to get through the snow with his vehicle. So he's really excited, and my wife and I are really excited to get this thing passed so he can live there the rest of his life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melanie McCallum, and I'm in one oh five. I was wondering, because Wells Fargo was closing, if it would be possible that somehow we could rent some space at that parking lot in which to park. I know a lot of the neighbors are very upset about us parking on the street. The day that we were kicked out of our garage, there were people lining up, taking pictures, angry. It's not nice to live in a place where you feel like everybody gives you a lot of shade walking out because they're mad at you because you lived there. And I only just recently bought the home and did not realize the complexity of the problem that was before it. There was just like a basic one sentence in my contract that said there was a problem. You know, and obviously, this has been ongoing for a long, long time. And if it had been addressed a long time ago, every year, the cost of this goes up and up and up. So the market's denied every year, the more it costs. So it would be very nice to have it done if it gotten approved, maybe in two thousand and nineteen or some other year. It probably would have been half the cost. So it'd be really nice if not only some parking could be secured somewhere other than just the streets, so you don't have to worry about getting towed in the winter. And yeah, it'd be great to have it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hello, my name is Bronwyn. I've been in the Heights condominium since two thousand and twelve. I'm like my other neighbors that live in my building. It's taken a toll over me over the past couple of years, especially when we got denied the first time, the second time. So the fact that we, our garage is condemned, we can't park down there. We're forced to park in the street. It's embarrassment to myself, to my family, to my neighbors. And I really don't know what we're going to do when it does snow. I'm having difficulty just coming home and finding a spot, especially with pouring down rain tonight. Walking two blocks, so we're getting close. Hopefully, I get this resolved. This is my residence. This is where I live. It's been there for my sons during hard times. They moved in with me when their father passed away. Since then, they've grown up and they've moved out and they have their own place. This is where they want their mother to live. This is where I want to live. I want to stay in Bloomington. I want to stay in my condominium. I want to fix it up. I want to continue with the project that I've put in place. I put that in hold during the pandemic because I had to. But right now, I'm putting it on hold until I get the approval to move forward. I want to stay there. So with that being said, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Others, please.
Mayor Councilmembers, my name is Tom Lasai. I'm president of Bloom Hill, a highly regarded position. The association next to it, all fifteen units. We're the neighbors they talked about who are complaining about them parking. And I certainly share their concerns and their problems, and I, this is not an easy walk to get from those parking spaces. The problems we've had this summer is getting our trash removed. They're having the same problems. Their trash sits out in dumpsters that are open. How they're going to get out is going to be interesting, how we're going to get plowed. We've got, it's a turn coming up here, so it creates safety issues. So I echo everything they said. This is important to approve. And we are here to support that and want you to prove that staffs recommend it. I get concerned when I see the alternatives and some of your questions because the temptation is to say, should we do more? Are we doing enough? I, I, those are good questions, but we can't wait. You know, the consequence that was not intended by the concern about people's to pay in two thousand and seventeen has severely devalued the value of their units. They're in a terrible position, and now you're devaluing our housing if we don't get this fixed. I don't think this is a perfect solution, but it's a solution that needs to be voted on, needs to move forward, needs to get done, and I encourage you to help those people who can't afford what's in there. At the very worst, though, they will be able to sell their condominiums if, in fact, they can't afford it today. They can't do that. No lender would touch this. I think it's unfortunate. They didn't address some of the cosmetic issues, and I have some of your concerns about some other issues. I suggest we solve those later. Let's get this done. And we need to know how they're going to be able to park this winter. How are you going to plow? I lived in the city of Minneapolis for thirty years. I know what that's like. So please approve this tonight for their benefit and ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaSalle. Others?
Mayor Councilmembers, I just want to address some of the
Well, we'll get to the questions after we're done. I want to make sure everybody has a chance here because I know we've got at least a couple of people online. Why don't we go to that now? And anybody who is waiting to speak over the phone?
If you're on the phone, please hit star six to unmute. If you're on your computer, if you'd like to unmute.
No? Okay. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak to this? Mr. Coleman?
Hello, I'm Robert Coleman. Obviously, I'm not a resident, so you can take my opinion with a grain of salt. But I think that when I was looking through the the packet, it definitely seems like a dire situation that probably, well, definitely should have been addressed earlier, but you can't expect a condo association to have that many million dollars in a rainy day fund to do something big like this. So the, the, the TIF, the, the geo-bonding, all of that stuff, I'm definitely in support of. The one thing that gives me a little pause is the local affordable housing aid. That is a sales tax that we all pay that I love, but I'm a little concerned about choosing a project for it before the final decision and like the the public engagement and the, the public hearings on what we are going to spend that money on. Excuse me. I was really looking forward to having that discussion to see with what, what we can put this money towards and you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't a whole lot. I, I understand, but just making sure that, seeing as it is a sales tax that we all pay and not just something that the association members will be paying. A little worried about giving a project for that so soon, especially if there could be other associations who are like, hey, we have a, we have an issue. Maybe we could get some funding from the LHA and you know, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Daniel Burridge. Recently, my mom just came up and talked. Currently, I do not live there, but it was a place that I was able to live at, that I was able to call home. And it's, it's served its purpose for myself. I was able to move on. And, I mean, now I'm married, living in my own place, but it's still home to my mother. I do hope it's something that you progress forward in past tonight. I know she's, she's got her projects that she continues to work on, but they've kind of been put on a halt temporarily. So hopefully, after tonight, she can continue with those again. But yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, last call. Very good, council. We have heard from a number of people and apparently, we don't have anyone wishing to speak on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point six this evening.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Mua to close the public hearing on item four point six. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero to close the public hearing. So council questions? Anything that needs to be clarified? Because this is not, this is a complex issue and something we have not done before here in the city of Bloomington. Any questions that you need answered by staff? Or after the public hearing, any questions that we might need answered? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. I just got a couple here. Can you talk to the risk of this? Because we're doing general obligation bonds. So if for some reason the, they were not paid, that would fall upon the taxpayers, the residents and businesses of Bloomington to pay? Is that accurate?
Mayor and council members, thank you for that question. So it, there are risks associated with general obligation bonding. And I also wanted to highlight that we've have some opportunities for securities in place for this proposal. So I would highlight the tax increment financing revenue can be, we believe can be identified for repayment of the geo bond debt service specifically. So that would ensure that if there were some foreclosures or inability to pay debt, pay from the condo owners, that some of that TIF revenue would be a backstop. We would also collect on that revenue on the backend as the, the TIF district would have a lifespan longer than the financing of the loan. So that would ensure repayment. That would go back to the HRA, apologies. But the other opportunity then for security would be through the HRA interfund loan. That development fund could be essentially second in line after the repayment of the debt service on the geo bonds. So the other thing to highlight would be that because this is getting recorded as a special assessment, if there is a foreclosure, the assessment remains with the property. So a subsequent owner would be responsible for repaying that through property taxes. So the, there are some securities in place, but the risk, agreed, the risk would be if that, if repayment doesn't take place, then because it's a geo bond, it falls to the Bloomington tax base.
So, and just for clarification, the tax increment financing is basically forgone taxes that they would not pay. So based on the increase in valuation of these improvements. So it's basically being backstopped by them not paying taxes, which puts additional burden on everyone else in the community to pay those taxes.
Mr. Verbrug, you wanna weigh in on that one?
Yep, Mr. Mayor and council members. So we're talking about payment of taxes in two different ways. So the assessment is different than taxes. You might assume that if they're not paying assessment, that they may not also pay their property tax. And that goes back to Mr. Neymeyer's comment about those being attached to the property. So at some point, they're always gonna be brought due. But the TIF is going to generate from the values of the property. The value doesn't necessarily get reduced if a person is not paying on an assessment. So I don't think that those two are necessarily tied together.
Thank you for the clarification. My understanding, the TIF, they would pay the taxes, but they'd go into the TIF. And then that TIF would be used to pay back if they didn't pay the loan. So they'd be using their taxes. What, what I heard is it was a backstop to the geo bond.
Mayor and council members, but it's just the increment. So the, their base property values or their base tax capacity that they're currently paying would still be programmed as tax, as any other tax, but the increment would go toward, yes.
Yeah, no, I was only talking about the increment. So I was like, yeah. Apologize if I was not clear, but the increment, the value that's created by these improvements would go into the TIF and could be used to pay that back. So basically, instead of it going into the general fund, it would potentially go to pay back if, if they weren't able to make that. I just wanna make sure I'm clear about that.
Mayor and council, in either scenario, the, the proposal is that that TIF revenue goes toward this project. And the goal of that is to reduce the assessment that the owners pay. So this wouldn't be, if, if we had an expectation that the owners would be capable of repaying their request for bonding through the HRA, then we wouldn't be proposing the establishment of a TIF district. But what that establishment allows for is a further reduction. And if we went to the slide, it's, it's around, I believe it's around seventy dollars a month less.
I believe it was sixty-six dollars, but yeah. And, and so just to be clear about that, though, they're paying those taxes, but it goes to pay for the improvements as opposed to going into the city general fund.
Ms. Bergren?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. The nuance is just that the, when we, the TIF increment comes in as money, instead of paying the HRA back first, we'll pay the bond back first. So that's the distinction, sort of to ensure that we can make the bond repayments. Bond repayments will be prioritized over repaying the HRA's development fund.
And I guess the clarification I'm looking for is it won't go to the city general fund?
Correct.
Thank you. And then the HRA loan, what else could that be used for? I mean, that's a significant amount of money. I think one point four million. You know, what other opportunities do we have in the community to utilize that money?
Mayor and council members, the HRA development fund does have a lot of pressures for use, but I would want to bring the message forward from the HRA board that there was unanimous support for this particular use of their fund. There are other pressures to that fund, but as of, if, if we were to commit that, the HRA development fund to support of this project, there is still balance remaining to support future projects. I'll leave it there.
Mayor, if I might, just my last question. We have other similar programs where we assist associations or individual homeowners, if they have deferred maintenance and aren't able to make it, we have a loan program for deferred maintenance and things like this. This seems very clearly deferred maintenance. Are any of those, do we actually directly inject money? Or all of those, a loan program securitized that we get paid back for?
Mayor and councils, the HRA administers two loan programs for deferred maintenance. There's the, there's a neighborhood rehabilitation loan, which is required to be repaid at the end of the loan term. There's also an emergency help loan. And I believe that that loan has a forgiveness schedule. So that, yeah. But in the most, for the most case, for, the, the majority of our loans are the neighborhood loans for that program and those loans do get repaid.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I might just follow up on that. We, we also did an exterior project with a town home condo development association because they weren't able to afford it, similar situation to here. We were able to get them better interest rates by going through us. But that was just a loan that they repaid and they had to repay. We had, you know, basically collateral or security and things like that. Is that accurate? I forget what that program was called, but...
Mayor and council members, you may be referring to Sutton Place Two. That was a...
So, yeah.
Housing association that is the only association that's received an HRA through the city. And that was in two thousand seventeen, I believe. And so that was a simpler request. It was strictly bonding. And so that would, were in the term of that financing, it is to be repaid for the length of that. And I think it's a fifteen-year term instead of this is a twenty. So just to be clear, the request from the, the HRA request tonight includes bonding similar. It also includes an interfund loan, which would be repaid. And the TIF revenue does decrease what they have to repay, but the majority of that funding would be repaid.
Thank you for the clarifications. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, mayor. I think that Councilmember Nelson kind of covered the risk questions that I had. And there's certainly, I do have some policy questions that don't seem to be germane right now, mayor, in terms of the, how this policy and some other things that I have questions about. My understanding from the city manager is that the assistant city manager is doing some research on some of that stuff and hoping that we can kind of bring that back at a later time. My question is about specifically tonight, in terms of the eligibility for this. I'm looking through the, the eligible uses of HIA financing. And my understanding is I look through all of those that, that this would qualify, you know, for that eligibility. And then if you could just then secondarily, talk a little bit about the support from staff and also from the HRA.
Mayor and council members, to your first question, the, the eligibility of the request, this did go through a staff review, which is required through our HRA approval process. And we found that it met all requirements of approval. And in terms of the second question on HRA recommendation for, HRA and staff recommendation for approval. So as I mentioned, the first two requests that the city received for an HIA were denied due to that extreme financial burden that the condo owners would be faced with if, if the requests were approved. So the reason that, or the, the change for this request is the incorporation of the interfund loan, which allows for lower interest financing. It's the incorporation of establishing a TIF district and it's the additional proposal for direct...
I don't want, I don't mean to cut you off. So what I'm hearing is staff has support for this and we have support from the, from the HRA. And so from A through G in this eligibility financing piece, staff and both the board were able to, to, to make those, make those findings. I'm just curious, I know we have one HRA member here. I'd be interested to hear his, his commentary on this.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, during the HRA meeting, I would say we had a robust conversation regarding this. All the, the questions, the concerns, the risks were definitely brought up. But ultimately, it came to what is the goal of the HRA? And what is our purpose of the HRA? And this to provide and protect affordable housing and provide for new additional housing. And the view is if this particular project is denied, we would lose significant naturally occurring affordable housing within the city. Are there other options potentially? But that, that could move us in completely different directions, move us to market rates, reduce the ability for residents to be in that fifty, sixty percent AMI range to afford to live in Bloomington. And not to mention the long-term residents that have lived at the Heights for significant, significant number of years. And so through the conversation, that's where we came to the consensus that this would be appropriate use of funds to protect the naturally affordable housing that we currently have with the Heights and then continue to see it moving in the future with the securities that we have attached, with the stipulations that we have to ensure that this continues to be upkept and that they don't come back to us again in ten, fifteen years with other issues. And so that's why we kind of got to the, the recommendation that we have from the HRA.
Thank you for that input, Councilmember Mua. Any additional questions, council, that might help shape your thinking on this or, or might help move this forward? Or are, are people comfortable talking more about this and perhaps moving this forward? Councilmember Nelson?
I just have one last question. Do we have any other condos, associations, townhomes, whatever they might be, that are potentially in a similar situation? I'm, I'm worried about setting a precedent here that we might have a floodgate. I mean, and I mean, that's with all due respect, but the, the issue here is that people didn't pay enough over time to maintain the facility. And now we're having to step in, the entire community is having to step in and help out. And that may be totally appropriate based on what Councilmember Mua said and the HRA recommendation and staff recommendation. But I'm just worried, okay, we got this one. Which one, what's next? What's coming down the pipe? Are we disincentivizing associations from collecting reasonable HOA fees and maintaining their properties? You know, especially when we get past what we've historically done of a loan. You know, we're going beyond just a loan here. We're actually directly putting money into this to help out with it, to get it to work out. And that's my concern.
Mr. Verbrug?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I think the best answer to that question, Councilmember Nelson, is we, we don't know what we don't know. And we're actually going to be coming back to the council in the relatively near future to talk about maybe putting in place a, a parking structure inspection requirement within the city so that we can have a formalized way to make sure that we are aware of situations as they present themselves.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Okay, couple of things. One, I'm a little confused about the comment that we're putting money here. When I see what I see here, we're doing a TIF, which we do for lots of businesses. We're doing it for property. I get that. But we're willing to throw millions of dollars in TIF at the Mall of America and even at small businesses like Europolis and everything. So I'm feeling kind of like, I don't know why we wouldn't do that for the people that live and work here either. I'm seeing an interfund loan, which I understand we're actually going to get interest on. And we're seeing the bonding, which they're also going to be assessed interest. So the only time that, the only time that we're not gonna get paid is, these things aren't gonna get paid back, is if they default. But that's true of every loan in the world, all over the place, right? I default on my mortgage. I don't get to keep my house. I default on my credit card. I don't get to keep my assets. I mean, I don't know. Yes, it's, there's an obligation to the HOA to do better going forward. And I've, I've, I would say my biggest ask of the people that might be beneficiaries of this project is that they actually get a working HOA under their belt and figure out how to make sure this never happens again. But that's true of HOAs everywhere. I've been involved in, every, every single city I've lived in, I have owned a condo. And that means I have five, six, eight HOAs under my belt. They're all different and they're all, different states are different. They're hard, but they require that the, that the residents of the, of the, of the organization are invested in that in the same way that we are as city council members are invested in the work that we do here. Like, right? We don't just come up, we didn't get elected and then we just sat here doing nothing. We actually do things and we actually pay attention and we actually get worked on and we actually debate and argue and, you know, frustrate each other from time to time. So, so the HOA is no different. If you're elected to the board of an HOA, you have to pay attention to the HOA's job, right? So, you know, I, I think, you know, we've, there's lots of ways to solve for that. HOAs notoriously are difficult to manage. I hope that the folks at the Heights will do a better job there. But I don't see this as any more risky than anything we've done to, to support a small business or for that matter, to support a massive business in the South Loop. We've done these kinds of trickeration financing stuff all over this city to get economic development done or community development done or whatever. And so I feel really confident that as long as they pay it back, which I felt really great hearing from seven, eight residents today who, who, who are like, please do this for us because that tells me that they're invested and they want, they want to stay in their homes. And, you know, that's good. So all that having been said, I, I don't know, Mr. Verbrug, when, before the council started, I thought we, we weren't necessarily gonna be taking the vote tonight, but we are taking the vote tonight. If that's true, that's great. I would be, I am ready to move it if you want because I'm really incentivized to help the folks in my district get this over the line.
I know we have a couple more questions. A very brief second bite of the apple for you two, Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember Lohman, very quickly.
Thank you, mayor. The only thing I want to say about precedent is that the precedent I see here is that it's really hard to get an HIA in Bloomington. This has been going on since two thousand seventeen. And so like if other condo units and HOAs have needs and they want the city to help, they have to show that this is the last resort. And the city doesn't just give out HIAs willy-nilly. This has been going on for, you know, since two thousand seventeen. It's come up and got rejected twice and this is the third round at it.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. So I, I think, I think my colleagues have really framed this particularly well, mayor. And I, I think that, I think we've got most of our things out here and the concerns. I, you know, I just want to say that, you know, to my Councilmember Nelson, I think that you've brought forward some concerns that I share. I've shared those with the city manager earlier today. I've got a lot of those concerns about, you know, the... I've got a lot of those concerns about, you know, that what does this mean for these other things? But I think those are really, as I look at them, policy concerns and questions. We really haven't done anything with this. But when you look at the, both criteria and then also the approval criteria, I think this meets both of them. And I think both staff and, and both the HRA board have done that. And that's the reason why I can support moving this through today. I think we've got to give some certainty to our residents. And that does not mean by any means that I don't have those long-term concerns, that I do want those addressed.
Councilmember Rivas.
One quick comment. My only reservation is the fact that we are deciding to spend the taxpayers' money. Other than that, though, I fully support this. I think we ought to be concerned about the needs of the residents of the city of Bloomington. And as much as it goes against my, my beliefs, I think it's the right thing to do. So I will support this.
Mr. Verbrugge, comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Sensing the drift here. And would ask for a little direction in this regard. One of the things that staff identified after the packet was prepared is they would like to offer a prepay opportunity for the assessments, which isn't currently included in the language that you have. So there's just some technical change we need to make, and I want to make sure we have all our I's dotted and T's crossed on this thing. So if you're comfortable with it, direct us to make that change. And then we will bring this back, and we can put it on consent on December 2nd if people are comfortable doing that. So it'd be just a two-week delay in approving. But, but I'm, what I'm understanding is that this is likely to gain the support of the council. Councilmember Carter will be back on December 2nd. She was also at the HRA for that vote, supported at that level. Don't want to speak for her. But we'd just like a couple of weeks to make sure that we've got everything procedurally in order before we do adopt it.
Mayor members, the paragraph specifically that the city manager is referring to is at 2.03 of the resolution. Looks like, to me, it's on 639 of the packet. And it discusses prepayment. Right now, it prohibits partial prepayment. And we want to make sure, we, we want to think through the opportunities for partial prepayment and make sure that we are, understand, say, partial prepayment is permitted to allow that. We want to think through what the specific minimum might be. For example, under special assessments, the minimum is $100. Think through what that minimum is. The other thing we want to make sure is that you all understand that the impact of that would, of partial prepayment would be, would not lower the $1 million that we expect to be required for the GO bond. What it would do is lower the amount of money that would be in the interfund loans and the other accounts that are being deployed to make up this, this funding. So just want to be clear on that and make sure that everyone understands that, and then also be available for any questions. Right now, we know for sure that 2.03 would need to be amended. Want to make sure that everybody has had a chance to think through and read through closely to make sure there isn't anything else. And make sure that the numbers stay as they are. Obviously, the residents are, you know, need to be informed of that. We would send out a communication, make sure they have that information. We've got the holiday coming up. The other thing to know is that there is a requirement in the law that, that a letter is sent out with all of this information after the fact. So there will be additional efforts to communicate as required by the law. The one other thing to be clear on is that this is a fee. It's not the same as an assessment, a special assessment like we have with, for example, the PMP that you had tonight. So we have language in the ordinance that allows the potential to create a special assessment, should that be necessary down the road. So just understanding all these different levers that are in play potentially here in this project. The one other thing that I don't think we've had a chance to mention is there was comments during the public hearing about parking and what's going to happen with the parking. So staff have been working diligently in numerous departments, and we've come up with what we hope will provide some temporary relief during snow emergencies. And that communication will be going out later this week.
So I guess the council question that we've, we've heard, I think we hear counting noses, a consensus to move this forward. We heard a request from staff to maybe hold this off for two weeks and put it on consent so we wouldn't have another public hearing, we wouldn't necessarily have the long discussion, but to clean up certain aspects of it, including prepay. And for that matter, to gain a bit more, a better understanding, I think, with parking as well, parking options. So my question to you is, are we comfortable doing that? Giving staff a bit more time to flesh out the whole prepay and clean that up? Or do we want to move forward with this tonight? Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I think that staff has brought forward some valid concerns. I would prefer to just get it done tonight. Also, I'd like my colleagues to have the opportunity to, you know, vote their consciences if they, they don't want to support this. But I think there's some good reasons to hold it off. I mean, Councilmember Carter isn't here. That would give the opportunity to see everything. But I, I know for those folks who are gathered here, I just wonder, having some of this definity, you know, if with a vote being done today. But it may not be prudent to, to do that. So I'm leaning towards what staff has recommended.
Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would personally lean towards cleaning it up, bringing it back on consent and approving it then. And I will say that at that point, I would likely approve it. You know, I know I asked questions and brought up risks and all that. But the reality is, is, you know, we are looking at putting public money into this, but it's a small amount. It's that TIF amount that we wouldn't get. If we just did a loan and they did these improvements, those improvements would increase the value. We'd get that into our general fund. The taxes on that, we won't. We're helping the folks there that are in this situation with that $66 a unit. And we've done this, as Councilmember DeLisandro said, we've done this with other places. You know, typically, TIF would encourage the development of new, but it can also be used to preserve. And we've done that in other places, over off of Old Chocopee there. I forget the one that the, but quite a few units there. I think we did TIF to help preserve so they could renovate that facility there. So I, I'm not opposed to this. I just want to go through the risks of it. And it sounds like if some, for some reason, something doesn't go well and people can't pay and there's, you know, foreclosures or people walk away, there are some levels of protection to get that money back. So that's a long way of saying I don't know. Anybody here needs to be worried about if it's going to pass on consent in two weeks. So if people are looking for certainty, I think you can hear what people have said. My only question is on the LHA, and I would actually advocate for maybe pulling that out and having that larger discussion, because this isn't going to be built anytime soon. And we can decide that question later, potentially, if we want to have that, if, if that's the way we want to use that, because that's coming out of the allocation from the state tax revenue. And this may be a great use for it. It possibly could, but there may be other great uses for it as well. So that's the only part that I would just ask, at least consideration of pulling out, have that larger conversation and deciding if we want to move that part later.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
So I guess I probably had a similar question. It feels to me like we could pass the first two motions, establishing the, the HIA, because that's not related to the fee. Because it looks to me like the ordinance that's specifically related to the fee, that, which includes the language in 2.3, is, is related to motion, the third motion here, which is a resolution approving a housing improvement fee. So is there any reason why we can't move the first two? I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, you could move the ordinance tonight, and we can come back with the fee. The, we would need to do a small tweak on the summary publication. There is, but that's certainly something we can do tonight if you'd like. We put together a resolution for summary publication, because it's a pretty long ordinance. So we can make that tweak if you want to take action on the ordinance tonight, and we can do the fee on consent on.
It limit, in my opinion, Mr. Mayor, it limits the number of things that are on consent. So we've done the vote that we needed to do to establish the HIA here tonight. And then the stuff that's on consent on the second is a smaller number. So that would be my proposal. Similar to what Councilmember Nelson was saying. You know, I'm personally of the opinion that, that, that if we do that, here's where I'm getting, the reason why I'm connecting these two, is because if we do prove the ordinance tonight and establish the HIA, then they need the, they need the LHA money in order to give the financial relief, which comes before it's being built, right? So if, if we're putting them in the position to, to agree to the HIA, they sign all the documents, they have the prepayment stuff, the fee stuff coming in December. They only have till, what was it, January something to, to, to agree to get it all done, or else it goes on there, it goes as a, you know, it goes into the effect, which means anybody who needs to get aid, needs to get that aid before that January 31st date or whatever it is. So it's not as much time as we think it is to get the, the financial assistance portion of this done. That doesn't mean it can't be done on the second. But I don't think that we were planning on talking on the second about LHA as a big general fund. I, I don't think that was on the agenda.
I, 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 I think the structure was the structure. I mean, we can, if, if we don't like the structure, we guess we can pull the structure out and, and delay the entire conversation here, because the LHA portion of it is a significant portion of it. So if we're going to pull that out, and then we have to figure out where the rest of the money's coming from. And that, I, then I don't know that it would be correct to, to, to start doing this piecemeal without any certainty as to whether or not we're going to use that LHA money. Or if we don't use that LHA money, where else is the money coming from?
I, for one, am fine with using the LHA money here, especially because the experts on this issue, the HRA, have said this is what they want to do with their money. So that's where my head's at. I don't know if we have the noses for that.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I was simply going to say, we're planning to have a giant meeting with the council and the HRA to talk through some issues, and LHA is one of the things that's on that issue. So I'm, I'm comfortable proceeding ahead the way that it's laid out now and recognizing that the amount that we have designated as LHA into this project, I, I think is a marginal amount for the LHA that's ultimately going to be received. So it took me a while to get comfortable with that idea, but Stackford threw me over pretty good. They got me into the corner of the ring and just hit body blow after body blow, so. Yeah, they, they softened me up pretty good.
Mayor, councilmembers, if I may echo what Councilmember DeLisandro said about the importance of this direct income-based assistance coinciding with that deadline for prepayment, that is quite important. So I don't, if we, yeah, I just wanted to second that. We would want the condo owners to be able to receive that assistance, which they could then program toward repayment of their, their assessment prior to interest. If we wait after that date, then as the resolution and the ordinance are written, they have that full assessment amount, which is inclusive of interest.
Counsel, I'm going to make the motion that we hold item 4.6 over until our December 2nd meeting with the intent of passing on our, or with the intent of putting it onto the, the consent agenda at that time, as it's, as it's written here in the entire, all four motions, with the understanding that there is, there is agreement among the council on this, and we are moving forward with this in such a way that we're giving staff an opportunity to clean up and to, to correct whatever they need to correct, but with the understanding that it would be on consent, meaning, of course, consent, meaning it's an agreement and we're moving forward with this.
And I'd be happy to second that, as long as you're also adding this, this other portion of discussion about the fees and the directing the prepayment option.
That's part of the cleanup that we were talking about.
Yeah, so I'll second that then.
The partial prepayment.
Yeah.
Yep.
Partial prepayment.
To pre, to make that permitted.
Everybody clear on that? Is there any other discussion on that motion that is just made to, to lay this, to lay item 4.6 over? Table, what, what's the correct term?
Postpone it.
To table it, to postpone it, and have it on our consent agenda on December 2nd? No further. All four items. All four items. No further discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Now, I want to say to the folks who are watching this, I, I don't want you to go home and, and think, oh my God, they didn't make a decision. The fact that it's on the consent agenda, as I said, the notion of a consent agenda is that there's consent among the council about moving forward on this. And we want to give staff an opportunity to clean up, to put a couple of more items in there in terms of the prepayment options, just to make sure everything is in place. But I think you can go into your Thanksgiving weekend and into early December comfortable, with some assurance that, that we're moving in the right direction here. All right? So thank you all for being here. And, and as part of that discussion also, on December 2nd, I think we'll, I would like to direct staff also to at least bring forward some parking options for us as well.
Yeah, mayor members, they should definitely be watching the mailbox. My understanding is it's going in the mail tomorrow, Kenny? Is that right? It's going in the mail tomorrow, so it should be there. There, we, we looked at our code and just some special options and used the authority of the police chief, the park and rec director, and somebody else, the city engineer, and came up with a solution, which hopefully is a temporary one while we're working through this. The other thing that I just wanted to make sure is that if folks have questions about what's going on and whatnot, there is an email box that we set up and a phone number that everyone has been provided. So they should definitely put those forward so that we can make sure to get everybody's questions answered so that they're, they have all the information they can, they need to make the choices that they need to make.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Thank you all for being here this evening. We didn't put an exclamations point on this quite yet, but I think we're, as I said, that that's absolutely the direction that we're heading in. So you can rest assured, or to have some assurance as you, as you head, head home this evening. We're going to move to item 4.7 on our agenda. This is another public hearing for a resolution for host approval for issuance of the revenue bonds by Iowa Finance Authority to Life Space Communities Incorporated, which is Friendship Village of Bloomington. Laurie Economy-Scholder here.
Good evening, mayor and council. Normally for host approval, because it is generally a pretty short item, we do not have a presentation for it. As you mentioned, the Iowa Finance Authority is issuing the revenue bonds for Life Space Communities. They are looking to issue in an amount of $180 million. They are looking to take $10 million of that, of those dollars and spend them on Friendship Village. They would be used for addition, renovation, remodel, equipping, and miscellaneous capital improvement to the life care community. The liability for the bonds that are being issued are not a liability of the city of Minneapolis, or excuse, Minneapolis, wow, I seen Minnesota there. Flashback. A long time ago, I worked for Minneapolis. So the city of Bloomington or the state of Minnesota. So in that particular piece of this, the host approval is required under IRS rule or section 147F, which means if another government's unit is going to spend bond proceeds in our city, this, our, the city of Bloomington needs to give host approval for those dollars to be spent here. The bonds are special and limited obligations of Iowa and are paid solely from revenues and assets pledged to those payments. None of the city of Bloomington's residents or none of the city's assets are being pledged to these bonds. So with that, any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Economy-Scholder on this one?
We do have David Miller, executive director from Friendship Village, on the phone, and the issuer's attorney, Rhonda Scobie, from Dorsey &amp; Whitney, on the phone.
Any questions? I do think it's a bit arcane, and I'm puzzled about the whole notion of other cities not being able to spend bonds in another city, but I'm not going to get into that right now, so.
Mayor and council, that regulation is from 1986.
Enough said.
Mr. Mayor, what, what's the reason for the requirement of a public hearing?
That's what I wasn't going to get into right now.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious. It, it feels like a consent item in a lot of ways, and, but it has a requirement for a public hearing.
Yep.
Is that state law or federal law?
It's IRS.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So no questions by council? Very good. I will open the public hearing on item 4.7. This is a public hearing regarding a resolution for host approval for issuance of revenue bonds by the Iowa Finance Authority to Life Space Communities Incorporated. Is there anyone in this council chambers wishing to speak on this topic this evening, item 4.7? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Please unmute if you'd like to speak.
No one wishing to speak on the phone? Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward? I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.7.
So moved.
We've got a motion in the second, motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson to close the public hearing on item 4.7. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Counsel, any questions on this one? If not, I would look for action.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the Iowa Finance Authority of revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to make a loan. Authority of revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to make a loan to Life Space Communities Incorporated to finance and refinance certain facilities in Bloomington, Minnesota. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the resolution as stated in item 4.7. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thanks so very much. All right, council, we are just over halfway through our public hearings. How about that? No, we're not, we're. We are on to item 4.8, public hearing, and this is regarding increase, proposed increases in our water and wastewater rates. And Kari Carlson is here to lead us through this. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. So before the public hearing, I will provide a brief overview of the information that was already shared with the council on October 14th. The proposed rates and budgets are structured to ensure reliable and sustainable utility services while addressing inflationary pressures, future infrastructure needs, and maintaining affordability for residents and businesses. I'll begin with the water utility fund, followed by the wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste utility funds, then I'll show a combined recap of all proposed 2025 utility rates. So starting with the water utility fund, this slide here provides the comparison that we shared before. This is Bloomington, the 2024 water rates compared to comparable cities. And Bloomington here is on the second from the left, so the second lowest next to Eden Prairie. Also on this slide, there's a circle graph of expenses highlighting the large portions of expenses that go towards supply and treatment, asset renewal, and purchased water from Minneapolis. The 2025 budget request for the water utility has a total revenue amount of just under $22.5 million, expenses of $23.4 million, and a spend down of working capital of around $934,000. The long-term budget model shows the working cap, the working capital balance above goal with significant significant capital outlay estimated in 2024 and future years, especially 2027, which is forecasted to bring down working capital in the 80% to 87% range of goal for 2026 to 2028, but then back up to 92% of the goal in 2029. And so there is a proposed 3% rate increase for both tier one and tier two rates. The tier two rates apply to additional gallons consumed over 12,000 gallons in a two-month period. Next, we have the wastewater utility fund. And then, again, this slide provides the comparison of Bloomington. These are 2024 wastewater rates to comparable cities. And so on this slide with the wastewater rates, Bloomington is the third lowest next to Eden Prairie and Brooklyn Park, which had lower rates. And then it also has the circle graph of the expenses highlighting the large portions of expenses that go to the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, or MCES, that's shown there, with more than half, and that is for collection and treatment of wastewater. 2025 budget request has a total revenue amount of just over $15.7 million, expenses of just over $19.3 million, and a spend down of working capital of just over $3.6 million in the 25 budget. So if you recall, from October 14th, we had two different models. This is the model that does show additional sewer capacity projects in '25 and '26, as well as conservative estimates of a city SAC fee of $60,000 per year. So it's projecting a large sewer capacity expansion project in 2026 that would be funded with bond proceeds and is modeling out repayment of those bonds from a combination of city SAC fees and user rate fees. And then working capital is projected to dip down lower than usual in this fund between the 45% to 75% of goal, but then forecasted in the longer model that goes out further than what we're showing here, to come back to about 91% of the goal in 2033. But for 2025, the proposed increase that was published is also a 3% increase for wastewater. Stormwater utility, here's this slide that's comparing 2024 stormwater rates. On this one, everything in blue is 2024 rates. That green bar is right next to the blue one for Bloomington, showing what the what the change would be for the 2025 Bloomington stormwater rate. On this one, we're not as far to the the left as on the other ones that I was showing. We're closer to the right, but one, cities that have a higher stormwater rate include New Hope, St. Louis Park, Edina, and Minneapolis. The 2025 budget request for stormwater utility has a total revenue amount of just over $8.5 million, expenses of just under $9.5 million, and then a spend down of working capital of around $930,000. And this long-term budget model looks healthy. It's forecasting future years, working capital to be right at goal for '25, and then in the range between 85%, 93% from '26 to 2009. And the proposed increase for 2025 stormwater rates is 5%. And then finally, we have the solid waste utility fund. And the solid waste utility fund has a total revenue amount budget of just over $10.5 million, expenses of just under $9.9 million, and an increase to working capital of around $655,000. And the long-term budget model for the solid waste, if you recall, we're on track to meet our working capital goal for the solid waste fund in the long term, and we're factoring in that planned every-other-year curbside cleanup expense. And then overall, the weighted average increase for 2025 solid race, solid waste rates is 2.6%. And so all of those together on one slide are shown here. So water, wastewater, 3% increases are proposed, stormwater, 5%, and then solid waste, under 3% at 2.6. And then next slide, I'll just spend a little bit more time on, because we did not have this for the October 14th presentation. But this is a slide where we have all the residential utility rates combined, show the total increase in dollars based on just average usage. So on the left, we have more of a small garbage, minimal water use, and that would be an increase of $3.60 for a two-month period, or $21.96 per year. In the middle there, kind of medium usage, medium garbage, 11,000 gallons in that two-month period, $6.29 for two months, or $34.70 per year. And then for residents that have 22,000 gallon water usage, so it's going to go over that tier two rate and have large garbage, that would be $11.38 for a two-month period, or $68.28 per year with these proposed rate increases. And then I have one more slide before I'm done. Just finally, before I conclude, I wanted to share that the city of Bloomington staff is partnering with the U.S. Water Alliance on a task force to assess water and utility bill affordability. And this initiative aims to uncover affordability and equity challenges in the community and establish targeted solutions and some potential changes for cost of service models and ongoing and some future steps in the future. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions on this? As Ms. Carlson said, we heard this presentation a few weeks back. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Very quick question. I didn't see it in here, so I assume it's not, but we, we're, we're not able to address the every-other-week pickup yet in the, in this, because we don't have it as part of our 2026 negotiated consolidated rates. Is that right? Do I have that right?
I think that is correct, yes.
Yes. Okay, so the first year that that will likely be an option for people would be 2027? Does that seem right? Sorry, Laura, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Mayor, council members, Councilmember DeLisandro, 2026? 2026.
2026, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just obviously chomping at the bit for that one.
Additional questions, counsel? Councilmember Revas?
Yeah. If you could please give a brief explanation for the listeners or people who are watching. I've gotten quite a few emails on regards to the amount of, the percentage of tax increase. And as you add the 3% and 3%, you know, you come up to a bigger number, and I have a hard time explaining to residents exactly how that works. It's not as big as it seems as you add. I added quick 13.8% from the slides. That's based on what is being charged at the moment, but I have perhaps difficulties explaining it to them. So could you please explain that, how that works, so that it's not as high as it seems? I mean, it is obviously an 11% increase, but based on the fees that are being paid at the moment, correct?
So, mayor, council members, Councilmember Revas, so it is based on the current rate and then just increasing, like, for example, for the current water rate. The best way to see the impact of that was, I'll go back to the slide here. So all of those rates that I went through with the 3% increase and 5% increase, so like, if we just go into the middle, what that equates to in dollars is $37.74 for the year, so, or $6.29 for every two month, which we receive the utility bills for residents on a bimonthly basis. So the dollar impact that that has is dependent on each individual utility rate, and each one are looked closely to see what the future infrastructure needs are, what the cost of service is, and everything that it takes to to run that utility, and trying to find the lowest rate that will make that so that we're, when we're looking out into the future model for that fund and the cash reserves we have, that it's sustainable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Just to maybe clarify Councilmember Revas's question, you don't add those together because they only apply to the specific parts, so they only apply to a portion of that. So the wastewater only applies to wastewater, the water only applies to water, the storm sewer only applies to the storm sewer.
Right.
And if you can go back to the last slide, I mean, it's $200, and it went up $6, that's 3%. So it's, it's about 3% increase. It's just, it isn't, it isn't 11 or 13, or you just don't add them together because they don't apply to the whole thing. They're not cumulative in that way.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, just to, I was going to make the exact same comment, so just to give you the specifics, if you take 125, 2025, 125 times 6, that's $751.02. If you, if you take the 2196 increase for that same period, you take 2196 and you divide it by the $751.02, you get 2.9%. That's the actual increase number. Okay? So now that's, I didn't do it for all of those, I just did it for that first column, but you can do that same math for any of the columns. And in fact, you can do that same math for your own bill with whatever it is for your own family. And I'm sure if somebody wanted to call into the utility billing department and ask that specific question about their own bill, like, look at my December bill, and now tell me what it'll be in February, I have a feeling we could do that math for them. Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
If I may, I just hope that that clarification makes it clear to the people listening out there, because I do get a lot of questions, and I, as much as I explain it, that is a fraction of, it's just that you just multiply the number by, by the fee that is being, being charged at the moment. But I do get a lot of questions on regards to it, so I wanted, you know, they to hear from you rather than my explanation. So, thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council members, and Councilmember Revas. I understand what you're saying. I wasn't understanding your question before. So I guess, looking at the slide, and we have it all together, it's more, you could take an average of these rates, and it's closer to 3%, not adding each one individually. Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the presentations. Counsel, I'm sure you heard it, but basically, we heard the presentations for our public hearings on item 4.8, 9, 10, and 11. And so we're going to hold the public hearings individually, but the information, I dropped my pen here, the information has, has already been presented to us, so we're just going to be going through all the public hearings. So what I'll do first is open the public hearing for item 4.8. This is a public hearing regarding water and wastewater rate increases, proposed water and wastewater rate increases. Is there any, I will open that public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak, item 4.8 this evening? Anyone? No one on the phone right now, on hold? Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward to speak on item 4.8? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to close the public hearing on item 4.8. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing. Counsel, action on item 4.8?
Yeah, I'd be happy, oh.
Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, mayor. I'd move to adopt an ordinance amending appendix A of the Bloomington City Code to increase water and wastewater rates as indicated in chapter 11.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt the ordinance amending appendix A of the city code to increase water and wastewater rates as indicated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Muah, the second part of that, that motion, the second motion as well, please. Summary publication.
I move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication, ordinance number 2024-30, ordinance increase, to increase water and wastewater rates.
Second.
Move, motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, for summary publication on item 4.8. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Moving on to item 4.9, I will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance to increase solid waste and refuge, refuse collection fees. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.9 tonight? No one on the phone? Last call for anyone in the council chambers? Counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing, item 4.9.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.9. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Lohman, item 4.9.
4.9, I'll move to adopt a ordinance amending appendix A of the Bloomington City Code to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees indicated in chapter 11.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the ordinance amending appendix A of the city code to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Lohman, summary publication.
Move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of ordinance number 2024-31, ordinance to increase solid waste and refuse collection fees.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, for summary publication on item 4.9. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
Mayor, I just noticed in looking at the motion sheet that there were numbers filled in for those ordinances. In talking with Caitlin here and the city manager, we're not confident that those numbers are going to still be accurate based on the action to postpone 4.6 and some of the other things that went on earlier tonight. So just for the record, to be clear, I'm, I'm going to assume that, that mayor members are comfortable with staff making the necessary edit to their motions and actions to properly adjust and reflect the ordinance that they acted on. Yeah.
Yeah, fine with that. Can we just kind of going forward, just leave that blank like we normally do?
We typically do.
Yeah.
It was kind of weird, so I'm like, I'm going to read it.
Right.
Because normally you leave a blank, so I'm going to read just as it's written.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're okay? We're?
Yeah, I think everybody's clear that, and the record's clear, so, yeah, we're fine. Just wanted to make sure we get it down on the record.
Counsel, with the, with that, we are done with our public hearings for this evening, but now I would look for a motion on item 4.10, the resolution to change the stormwater charges.
Be happy to do that, mayor.
Councilmember Muah.
I'd move to adopt a resolution establishing, establishing a basic system rate for the purpose of calculating stormwater drainage charges pursuant to section 16.15 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt the resolution establishing a basic system rate for the purpose of calculating stormwater drainage charges. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And I will call now item 4.11 on our agenda. This is a resolution approving the 2025 utility fund budgets. This is a resolution approving the 2025 utility fund budgets. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so I make a move to adopt a resolution adopting the 2025 Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, and Solid Waste Enterprise Fund budgets.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Mua to adopt the resolution adopting the 2025 Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, and Solid Waste Enterprise Fund budgets. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have a seventh inning stretch, Mr. Mayor?
We're just getting started. We will move on to our organizational business, but before we do, Mr. Verbrugge is gonna chime in.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just conferring with staff and appreciating the lateness of the hour with a fulsome budget discussion for our Public Works Department and also the solid waste contract. I don't want to try to fit three items in the next 60 minutes. I think that would be giving them short shrift. I appreciate the looks. So with your agreement, I'd just like to move the missing middle conversation forward and I'll work with staff to figure out the proper date for that, but mid-December for that conversation.
So to be clear, when you say moving forward to postpone study item 5.3?
Correct.
Okay, then, okay. So council, I would look for a resolution to postpone item 5.3 to December 16th.
So moved.
December 16th, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend our agenda this evening, moving item 5.3 to December, the December 16th council meeting. All the, 5.2, sorry.
No, nope, nope, 5.3.
5.3.
Yep. Nope. On the, on the, that's the motion sheet which was prepared. The mayor members, what's happened is the motion sheet was prepared last week and then the packet was republished. And so that's why some of these things are not syncing up. So it's item 5.3 on the republished missing agenda, the missing middle housing agenda, which are December sometime.
December 16th. So my motion was to move study item 5.3, the missing middle housing discussion, to our December 16th meeting. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5.3. So we'll double back to item 5.1 and not get all the Public Works people mad at us if we didn't want to move them to December 16th. We know better than that if we want to get plowed out in the next couple of weeks. Item 5.1, a budget discussion for our Public Works General Fund, our fleet and facilities.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I am here with some of my fabulous colleagues in Public Works, Emma Strass, Tim Berent, and Erin Cattila to talk about the Public Works budget discussion, including items in the General Fund, Fleet, and Facilities. And we're three for three of engineers who cannot advance a PowerPoint and slide. Overall, we're gonna talk mainly about the General Fund and then the internal service fees this evening that you see. Why is it making sound effects? No, because now the laser's pointing at my hand. And now it's black. Thank you. It's good to have support. All right, next slide. We're gonna talk about the Public Works Department overview. As you're aware, we do a variety of different things from managing our streets. You can go to the next slide. From plowing and maintaining our streets to facilities and buildings. You've already handled the utility funds that we talk about. And then we have the two internal service funds. So just so that you have a scale of magnitude, 20% of Public Works budget comes from the General Fund, 27% comes from the internal service funds, and then 53% is from the utility funds. Next slide. As far as staffing, Public Works is currently just under 160 people. We're proposing to add one person in 2025. In the facilities realm, we did have a position that was eliminated in 2024. And then we shifted some staff from the Utilities Division to the Engineering Division in 2024 to handle some of the right-of-way permit permitting, so we appreciate that. And we also reclassified a part-time office assistant to a full-time office support specialist to handle that additional paperwork. Next slide. Next slide. We're gonna talk about the Public Works Administration budget. This is a very tiny budget. You're going to notice that there is about a $279,000 decrease in this budget and it was due to the position elimination. And that's all I have to say about that budget because it's pretty tiny. And then because Kari is very efficient, she goes into the details so you can see, you know, the internal IT charges that we're saving on that position, in case you were curious. Next slide. Engineering, next slide, please. In this budget, we're going to show the right-of-way permit increase significantly because most of that was previously housed in the Utility Division. Engineering only had the right-of-way encroachments and driveway permits and oversized vehicles, so it was a tiny slide. So I'm gonna go into more details on the next slide. So you can see that that's that $470,000 and then the $731,000 is the corresponding salaries in relationship to the revenue for those permits. Credit card fees is getting to be up there. And then several of the other items that you're gonna see on the budget are things you previously approved for us, whether it was for the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan or the speed limit changes. We had some tails that were going out into future years and so that's what you're seeing on a lot of those as well. Next slide. These staffing shifts that occurred, occurred here in 2024. We very much appreciate not making us wait until 2025 when we realized that the right-of-way fiber optic work was going to increase as much as it did. So we added one utility service specialist and then we did the other part-time to full-time for the office support specialist position. Next slide. Enhancing service delivery engineering. We had done a study in 2023 to determine where that right-of-way permitting should be best housed and that's how it ended up moving from utility to engineering. Had I known what was gonna be coming down our way, maybe I would have fought for something slightly different. But then the other thing we did is talked about speed limit timings and school zone timings and we've helped, helped support those changes recently. We continue to explore grant opportunities for our CIP projects. And then the one project we're really excited about, and I know Councilmember Nelson may not be so excited about a planning grant, but we got someone else to pay for all of it. So it has to do with Safe Streets and Roads for All. We got both the federal and the state to pay a half a million dollars to do that study. And it includes an update of our Safe Routes to School Plan, which is significant because we've done most of the projects that are currently in our plan. So we want new projects to make sure that our community can move around safely. Next slide. Revenue enhancements, engineering. We go around pretty much with our handout to anyone who will listen, whether you're in the federal government, state government, Hennepin County. So we're always looking for partners to help us pay for our construction projects. And then with the right-of-way permit fees, we're projecting just over a half million dollars next year. And then service reduction impacts. So if you were to decide that you wanted to cut some of our budget, I have some beautiful pictures of some traffic safety issues that might be of concern or some of the complaints that you probably have gotten a lot of phone calls this year related to the fiber work. So whether they're cross-boring through some other utility or they're accidentally discharging into our environmentally safe, significant areas, we want to make sure that we are providing that kind of service to our community. We also have a bullet point up there about slower economic development because as you've heard us present earlier about sewer access charge, charges, if we want to be a community that attracts bigger developments, because of how we were built out, we're going to need to upsize our sanitary sewer projects, or sanitary sewer system and that requires some money for different projects. So I will turn it over to Emma now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Now we're talking about sustainability, next slide. So we're gonna start with a general overview of the budget. The biggest change between this year and next year's budget is that there's changeover requests from sustainability to non-public works general fund funds, like the Fleets and Facilities Fund and also the Utilities Funds. Next slide. So here is the breakdown in three rows down. I want to call attention that it looks like we are spending less money with the services and supplies. This is recognizing that $145,000 from the budget request for next year is proposed to be used for strategic priority funds. And then also recognizing that there will be a rollover request for the budget that was approved for the Climate Action Plan by council earlier this year to continue work on that in 2025. Next slide. The biggest enhancing service delivery, the Climate Action Plan this year has been delayed. We've had some staffing changes, but now that new staff are on board, this will be a really big project for the community focusing on equity and resilience. Next slide. Recognizing that we still want to continue work while we're planning, we have two new programs, one that just launched this fall that will be a pilot that we continue next year focusing on energy efficiency grants for businesses and then also looking at rolling out a new program to help businesses complete energy audits. Next slide. What happens if we reduce service? We're looking at reduced resilience to climate change, increased greenhouse gas emissions, public health and safety risks that come with that, higher long-term costs, not being proactive, preventing the worst of climate change, and also looking at missed economic opportunities. And that's what I have for sustainability and I will pass it off to maintenance.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So I'll kind of discuss the maintenance budget. That includes street and traffic. You can go to the next slide. So you can see our revenues, 1.7 million, which is about a 2.8% difference between '25 and '24. Our overall expenditures are about 12.3 million. So that would be an overall budget increase of just under 5.8% to the maintenance budget. Next slide. So kind of the reason for these increases is we did increase kind of our contractual increases as far as the PMP seal coating increase, so we're seeing that. Concrete repair has increased as well, so we've got about $113,000 worth of that. Then we had increases in our supplies and utilities. Kind of the big increase is the internal charges, IT, fleet, facilities. As we all know, vehicles are getting more expensive, so we had about a $353,000 increase in that. And then we had a decrease in our chargebacks to our stormwater utility, which was 175,000. As you can see, we did have a decrease in salaries and benefits. We did move our office support specialist, 50% of his time, it was now being coded to parking wrecks because he does park maintenance for him, or supports park maintenance. And then we had, you know, a large increase in our sell-to-revenue of $4,000. And then obviously we had to transfer some franchise fees, PMP seal code of 43,000. So we had a total increase of $582,000 to our maintenance budget. Next slide, please. What we're kind of enhancing is we have a lot of retaining walls around the city. We're now getting that into GIS and that is gonna be incorporated when we do our pavement management walkthroughs. Our retaining walls will be updated and we'll be able to get conditions on that. Having those conditions, we'll be able to forecast what it's gonna cost us to replace some of our retaining walls that are not on certain projects. So that will definitely help us with enhancing our delivery. Next slide, please. If we did reduce some of our service, obviously our roads would start to deteriorate. We would not be plowing as efficient as we are. Obviously, people need to get to and fro. Also, you know, the safety risks, you know, we limit our, how much we plow, things like that. So there could be an increased liability to the city. Next slide, please. I'll turn this over to Erin for fleet.
Mayor, councilmembers. Fleet Department, we are involved, basically taking care of all the equipment that the city has. We're also involved in all the departments and doing, or helping them with their purchasing and with their equipment and all the vehicle requirements. You can go to the next slide. On our overall revenue in 2025 budget is increasing by just under 8% and expenses are gonna increase by over 6%. I can get more detailed into the next one. Next slide. Charges the departments for the fleet repairs and replacements are increasing by 577,000, or a little bit over that. There's also projected increases for vehicle and equipment sales and interest income. For this fund, however, motor parts, supplies, and capital continue to rise and are expected to increase significantly again in this upcoming year. So fleet fund budget, long-term budget model for the fleet is '22 and '23. The working capital balance was much higher than the goal. Do just strictly build up to the cash reserve, some backordered vehicles that never arrived on time, that were pushed out. Forecast for this fund for the working capital balances is gonna dip down slightly, or I shouldn't say slightly, will dip down to 46% and 68% of the goal in '25 and '26, but will increase back up to 90 in 2028. Some of the stuff that we're struggling with is increases are still running over 6.5% on vehicle costs. That used to be the normal was 3.5%, so that's been a struggle for us. We've been taking a hard look at all the use on our vehicles to see if we can use better sharing in between different departments, better use of our fleet. We've also been looking to find different avenues for getting rid of more of the gasoline-powered equipment and change it over to electricity-powered. Some of our, some of the reduction impacts for the fleet were to be reduced efficiency for city operations, increased operational costs, disruption to public services, reduce lifespan of the city vehicles, negative environmental impact, increased liability and legal risks, and difficulty in responding to seasonal and weather-related demands.
All right, Mayor and Council, I am back again. So I'll discuss our facilities. So Facilities Department maintains about 800 square feet of buildings right now and we have an additional 150,000 that will be coming on in the next three years. That's the Community Health and Wellness Center and then the fleet repair garage as well. So we do have some substantial buildings that they do maintain. Next slide, please. So you can tell from our budget in '25, we are, what we charge other departments is just under 7.2 million. And then we have a transfer of funds, you'll see that 3 million. That is to pay back, once the fleet repair garage is issued debt, or bond, sorry, that will pay back the loan that we took out to purchase that property back in 2022. So that's where that 3 million comes from. So it's kind of skewed here. You see that we have, you know, a large increase in our revenues. And then our total expenditures, expenditures are about 9.7 million. Next slide, please. So as I said, we did increase our space occupancy and building repair to other departments, 312,000. And then our debt service fund that... And then our debt service fund that will be repaid back, our facilities fund when we do issue bond for the fleet garage is just over 3 million dollars. We do have an increase in our salaries. We did hire an additional assistant capital project manager and that was to help out our project capitals manager because in the next two to five years, we have a fair amount of building on the CIP. So that is, that person has been brought on, that we were able to bring them on in 24 with some carryover funds. And then we'll have to obviously pay that in 2025, the salary. And then also, we are also asking for an additional service technician. That is to keep up with what we see with growth of the city and keeping, you know, our repairs and our PMs in check. So that's about 238,000 increase. We have seen an increase in our materials and supplies as well. And then our contract cleaning as well has increased, so that's about 144,000 increase. And then we do have our increased internal charges, that's IT fleet, 204,000. And then we'll have some large projects coming up here in 25. Civic Plaza sidewalk will be one of them, so that's 520,000. So you can kind of see kind of our budget is about 2.2 million, which looks good because of that 3 million is getting rolled back into our facilities fund, but it's a little deceiving. Next slide, please. And then as you can tell from our, our lookout here, we are doing very well in 25. We're about 85% of our capital goal. And then we start dropping to 75%, 26, and then 65 and 27. We start climbing back in 28 and then 29, we, we're back to about 94% of our capital goal. So there's obviously little fluctuations here, but we, we're sitting pretty good here. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, our request is one additional service technician in 25. Next slide, please. And then enhance kind of our delivery. We're looking at more sustainable incorporating sustainable initiatives on our existing public buildings. One is the solar array that we are working on in the public works. I know this was approved in 24. Ran in a few hiccups. We're hoping to have it installed in 25 and operational in 25. And then as well as, you know, as far as solar or anything like that, we're looking at efficient building mechanicals. When we replace a boiler or air handler or anything like that, we're looking at more efficient mechanicals. So, next slide, please. Obviously, if we have reductions in impacts, the city buildings will deteriorate and then there'll be obviously an added expense. We're kind of running into that now that we've kind of kicked the can down the road and we've gone to that point where we can't kick it anymore. We don't want to be in that situation. We want to do our PMs, keep up on everything and be able to have a nice plan going forward as far as, you know, building replacements or additions, things like that. So, next slide. And that's all we have for public works. Any questions?
Well, thank you. That's a comprehensive look at things. Council, questions, comments? Discussion? Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my, I've been talking about this a lot lately and it's really around fleet. In my line of work, I work for a software company that does expensive travel management and I've seen a market shift of private industry moving from having their own fleets to hybridization or anything because fleet obviously comes with high capital costs to procure vehicles and then high maintenance costs that continue to keep up those. And so I'm just really interested in what we can do as a city to maintain the, the vehicles that we need, like can't just lease out or, you know, get snowplows from anywhere. We have to have those, but when it comes to like office workers who have to travel to meet residents or whatever, like how can we better, how can we creatively think of solutions to reduce the capital that we have to spend on vehicles? You know, whether it's paying mileage or what it is, how can we be more creative in the fleet side because I can see significant savings coming from that. So as we go through that process and we're working through it, would love to hear creative ideas of how we can better do that to manage our fleet.
Thank you, councilmember. Good comments? Other thoughts? Everybody's tired. You get off easy at 10:30.
Well, also pretty frugal this year, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So, and just a reminder that when it comes to budget, we're going to have our Pulling It All Together meeting next Monday night. So if you think of any questions that you really desperately wanted to ask this evening, but the hour was late, you can get them in again next week.
All right. So Mayor, I guess I do have one question.
Councilmember Mu.
So then when I look at the sustainability budget itself with respect to some of those staff changes that took place, I know that, that some of those positions were considered to be, you know, like for example, we had an assistant public works director and that was a part of that. Were those, so were, were those positions replaced somewhere else? You know, do we still have the same number of staff hours that are attributed to sustainability?
Yeah, we're still working through the staffing model right now. And we'll have more information about that next week.
So then how will that impact? And I don't have to answer it right now, how will that impact this budget that we're looking at today? You'll be able to answer those later on?
Yes. Next Monday. Anything else, council? Well, okay. Thank you very much for the information. Yes, if we come up with anything between now and next Monday when we have the Putting It All Together meeting, we'll, we'll certainly let you know. But appreciate you sticking with us at this late hour, so thank you very much. Thanks. And speaking of sticking with us at this late hour, item 5.3, our residential solid waste contract terms for extension. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Laura Horner and I am the solid waste program coordinator here with the city. I'm here this evening to discuss our residential solid waste contract and to review the negotiated term sheet that was provided to council in your agenda packet. So our goal tonight is to receive direction on whether to extend an invitation to the consortium to renew our contract consistent with those terms that was, that were provided to council. I'm joined this evening by utility superintendent Scott Anderson, as well as the vice chair of our consortium, Jason Hartman with Waste Management, and Chair Matt Herman with Republic Services. Matt will provide some brief remarks following the, my review of the proposal for a contract extension and will be available for questions as well. See if I can work the clicker. Here we go. So as background, our current agreement with the Bloomington haulers consortium expires on June 30th of 2026. The consortium is made up of three haulers. Republic Services servicing 54% of our residential solid waste dwelling units. Waste Management servicing 36%. And Aspen Waste Systems servicing 10%. At our August 5th council meeting, council recommended at that time that staff begin negotiations with the haulers on general contract terms presented that evening and to return to council to review the negotiated proposal, which we will do this evening. At that meeting, council further directed that if the negotiations were not successful by December, that staff should then begin preparing an RFP for residential solid waste collection. This approach was recommended due to satisfaction with current services based on community feedback and interest in continuing the partnership with the consortium if we are able to agree upon beneficial extension terms and pricing. So tonight, we will review those negotiated terms and prices for council's review. So I'll talk a little bit about our negotiation process. So after council approved those terms in August that the city wanted to see in a renewed agreement, we then met with the haulers and presented those terms to the haulers, provided some opportunities for question and discussion related to priorities. As council will recall, the major change that we are seeking in our contract is to pay for garbage disposal directly and this will really help us control our, our costs for disposal. We held five negotiation meetings with the haulers between September and October. We discussed the term requirements of the city consistent with council's direction along with the associated pricing. During those meetings, staff rejected two separate proposals by the haulers based on our desire to preserve and enhance services to the community while keeping costs reasonable, particularly as compared to cities with similar services. So at this time, I will discuss the service enhancements and changes included in the term sheet before you this evening compared with the initial service changes that were brought forward to council in August. And that is shown in the middle column there. So the initial negotiation terms approved by council included the city paying for garbage disposal directly, requiring dedicated Bloomington-only garbage routes, and turning on that every other week garbage in 2026. The term sheet before you today does include all of those service enhancements. We also requested that organics be paid for by the city directly and that organics collection be dedicated Bloomington-only routes as well. And all of this is also included in the term sheet this evening. We were not seeking any changes to our recycling service or yardway service and the terms before you today keep those services as is. And lastly, during the negotiations, one of the main priorities for the consortium was to increase our rate for curbside cleanup to better reflect their costs and labor needed to provide the service. As council is aware, this is a unique service that's not offered in many communities. Due to the high amount of labor and truck costs, the consortium originally sought to remove both yard waste and appliance pickup from the curbside cleanup. And after some significant back and forth and a review of the use of those services, we came to an agreement to remove yard waste pickup in the terms before you today due to relatively limited use by residents, but keep the appliance pickup as that is used more frequently. So the change to the curbside cleanup service is the only additional contract service change included in the term sheet today that wasn't part of the original terms presented to council back in August. So at this time, I'll go over each of the pricing elements included in the term sheet before you this evening. So the term sheet includes an annual price escalator of 4%. Our current annual price escalator in our contract is 3.5%. Originally, the haulers had proposed a 5% increase, which we rejected based on our review of similar cities and the price escalators included in those contracts. The cities that I've included in these comparison slides and future slides related to pricing were chosen because they have contracts that will be active in 2027. So we wanted to be sure we were looking at contracts that, that will be active. Vadniss Heights, St. Louis Park and St. Paul all have contracts that were signed in the past two years and are good indicators of current prices in current contracts. So the next pricing element is our garbage collection rate and disposal. It is a significant advantage to pay for garbage disposal directly for the city. This will help us control our actual disposal costs. It will also give us that environmental and economic incentive to reduce waste by keeping that garbage down. The term sheet includes a weekly collection rate of $9.62. That price does not change based on cart sizes as we will be paying for the disposal directly. If a household has more than one garbage cart, that second cart would cost $5. And there is an every other week rate of $8.65. And this is for a small garbage cart only. So upon reviewing this rate with other cities, we found that this garbage rate is competitive. For comparison, our weekly collection rate is less than St. Louis Park, Vadniss Heights and St. Paul. It's slightly more than Elk River. I would note that Elk River's contract was signed two years ago and it does expire in 2027, so it isn't one of the more recent contracts. So the next pricing element is for organics collection. This is a weekly collection rate of $5.82. That collection rate was reduced by 20 cents to reflect that we will pay for organics processing directly. And this rate is competitive when compared to St. Louis Park. Their weekly collection rate is $7.13 in their contract and they also pay for organics processing directly as we will. Organics is not yet offered in any of the other cities included in our review. So the next pricing element is for recycling. It was a priority for the haulers to increase the recycling processing fee that is included in our recycling commodity adjustment offset. It's a mouthful and we refer to that as the RCA O. The term sheet before you has a recycling processing fee of $115 per ton. The haulers provided us with comps of recycling processing fees paid at recycling facilities and that $115 a ton is in line with current processing costs. As council will recall, we added that RCA O in our contract is a form of a revenue share, so that helps to keep the cost for recycling transparent and more reflective of recycling markets because we know those really do fluctuate year to year. So that RCA O is calculated each year. It's based on the results of our commodity breakdown, so our blended ton of recycling, how much is metal, how much is plastic, how much is paper? The recycling commodity prices for each of those, the cost to process recyclables and the amount of recycling we collected. Then all of that information goes into a formula that provides us with that adjustment offset. And that's then applied to our recycling rate and it can either increase or decrease our rate. So it's a bit more difficult to compare recycling rates with other communities because each community handles that revenue share differently. Our RCA O is a bit unique. But when looking at our collection plus that estimated RCA O, our cost would be $7.60 per month in 2027 and that is in line with St. Louis Park and St. Paul, while Vadniss Heights and Elk River remain more competitive. On a future slide that compares our overall costs, you'll see that our overall costs for service do remain competitive with these communities. The next pricing element is yard waste. So the full season yard waste cost included in the term sheet before you is $124.80. This is an increase of 20% in our yard waste rate. Originally, the haulers had requested a full season yard waste rate of $150 and that we further limit the number of yard waste bags that residents can set out each week. So kind of a service reduction as well as that cost increase. We, we know that yard waste service is a very labor-intensive service for the haulers. Because of the number of bags that are set out, it requires a lot more time per stop. And we know that it just, it does take them more time and it costs more for this service. And when we compare our rates to other communities for yard waste, that rate remains competitive. You can see St. Paul is 127.54, Vadniss Heights at 137.81, and Elk River at 168.46. St. Louis Park's full season yard waste rate is lower at 87.72. However, I'll note that they require all customers pay for yard waste, which can bring, which brings down that overall cost since it's not a subscription service like ours is. The last pricing element is related to our curbside cleanup. The term sheet includes a 10% increase in the rate and also removes yard waste pickup from the service. Originally, the haulers had requested an increase of 20 to 25% for curbside cleanup and as I mentioned, had requested that both yard waste and appliance pickup be removed. We had anticipated that the cost for this service would increase due to high labor costs for the service and limited landfill capacity and that the nature of these bulky items take up quite a bit of room in landfills. The haulers regularly share that the cleanup is very expensive service to offer due to those factors. It's difficult to compare this with other cities as our service is unique. It's not offered in any of the cities included in our review. We know that the service is very well-loved by our residents here in Bloomington. So we, we do think that that price increase is reasonable and we know that it was a high priority change for the consortium. So in summary, when looking at our prices overall for garbage for garbage, recycling, and yard waste, you can see that the term sheet prices before you are competitive compared to communities in our review. Organics is not included in here, because most of these communities didn't offer organics. Elk River and Richfield are slightly more competitive. I would note that their contracts were signed earlier than the other communities, and they will expire the soonest. I also would note that this contract pricing is consistent with our anticipated expenses in our long-range budget model for solid waste services. So at this time, kind of in closing, I'll lay out the options available to the city as it relates to the contract. The first option would be to renew our contract, consistent with the term sheet provided to you this evening, and to offer, extend an invitation to the consortium for that renewal. The other option would be to move to an RFP for new service. There are some general benefits and disadvantages that can be considered for both options. We reviewed these in detail at our August meeting, so I don't plan on going into those in detail tonight. But at this time, staff is recommending that the city extend an invitation to renew the contract, consistent with the terms presented this evening, based on the benefits of a contract renewal that include competitive negotiated pricing, continuity of services, the established relationship with the consortium, and relatively high resident satisfaction. So the recommended action by staff is included on this slide here. There is an alternative motion in the agenda packet directing staff to begin pursuit of an RFP if that's desired. But at this time, I will invite our consortium representative Matt Herman with Republic Services up to share some brief remarks, and then we can open it up for questions.
Well, good evening. Thanks for staying with us this late. It's appreciated.
Well, Mr. Mayor Council, thank you for having me. My name is Matt Herman. I'm the Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services and also the Chief Manager of the Consortium. Very quickly, just wanted to say that we are very excited to be here. We're very proud, myself, my company, and all the consortium haulers. Proud to serve the residents of Bloomington, and I think we've put our best foot forward here to continue that partnership. I can't thank staff enough for the really good and honest conversations and good-faith negotiations that we've had since we last discussed this. We had great conversations about how to balance cost and need, and what was most beneficial, what the residents wanted, and how we could work together to put together a proposal that delivers that. So I'm very excited, very grateful to be here, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, again, thank you for being here, and thanks for staying with us this late and working through this conversation. Council, questions? Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple real quick ones. I knew we had an issue at one point in time with Friday missed pickups, and whether or not those were dealt with on a Saturday. And I wasn't sure if we resolved that. I wasn't here during the last time this came up, and I wasn't sure if that was a part of the terms and had that been resolved. And if it has, no need to, I mean, I can talk to you about it later.
Sure. Mayor Councilmember Lowman, the Friday missed pickup serviced on Saturday does remain in our contract, so there's no changes being made to that service. It is staying as is.
Okay, so they'll be picked up on Saturday as opposed to wait until Monday, because I know we had a problem with that.
That's correct. We do have an after-hours hotline that's been established for residents to call and utilize.
And then my other question, maybe it's jointly by you and maybe by the haulers, but I'm curious about, because I know at one point in time, staff had presented to the other group that was working with us before that there was some concern with that pickup, you know, our curbside pickup, that that may not be sustainable from the long term. And I wanted to just hear some comment on that. And as long as you're coming up, I'm also curious about the recycling markets, too, if you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure. Mayor Councilmember, through this proposal, we're making a commitment to continue the curbside cleanup every other year. We foresee some challenges, labor specifically with that, and we worked on ways that we could mitigate that. But this offer is our commitment to continue providing that service. All consortium members to continue providing that service.
Could you talk a little bit about the labor? The way I heard, some of the issues were not just labor, it was also just in terms of the equipment. Could you talk a little bit about those?
Certainly. Rearload trucks are becoming less common. A rearload truck is a truck that you deposit the material in in the back. They usually have a driver or two. It is sort of the old-school trash service. And as you've seen around town and across the region and across the country, we've gone to automation in more cases, where we have side-load trucks. So we are using rearload equipment for less and less. But there is a need for it, and that need will be filled. There's other things we can do with front-load trucks as well down the road. But at this point, we envision being able to deliver this service, and that's why we're committing to doing that through this term sheet.
And then as long as you're there, if you're talking about the recycling markets a little bit, in terms of how that's working, what your challenges are with that?
Certainly. I think since 2017, China soared when we stopped exporting recycled materials. We saw historically low commodity values. We have not returned to that pre-2017 level. We're seeing recovery in some of the areas through COVID. We saw higher demand for paper products. We saw some of those markets come up, and they've sort of settled back down. So we're seeing, I guess, what we would call maybe a stability in the markets. We don't see them coming, you know, racing past pre-China sword numbers. We're very, very lucky in this market to have robust manufacturing. We have a ready outlet for glass, which a lot of communities and regions of the country don't have. Now, we're still paying somebody to take that glass, but then they're able to pre-process it and get it back to market. So that's a huge volume by weight of material that we can pay somebody a relatively small amount to take and process and get recycled. So we're very fortunate to have that market here in the region. And we have robust markets for most of our materials, very local. So we're still seeing them sold. The horror stories we hear about nothing getting recycled, some of those are national and international stories. They're not Minnesota story, and they're certainly not Bloomington's.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, additional question. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any language around the HERC, possibility of HERC closure? Given the recent comments and the resolution passed by Minneapolis and the kind of uncertainty with the head of the county commission, do we have anything in there in case something does happen during the time of this contract?
Sure. Mayor Councilmember Mua, our contract, we will be changing the contract to pay for garbage disposal directly. So we'll be reimbursing the consortium for their actual costs for garbage at the HERC. We will be drafting some language to talk about disposal. Currently, our contracts already has language related to where our garbage must be disposed of, and that's at HERC. Unless HERC is not available, the consortium can choose alternate disposal methods that are licensed by the city and county. So we will be reviewing that to make sure that we are securing disposal locations in the event that HERC closes. I'll note that we can't guarantee what that price might be. So that, you know, that is one of the risks of paying for garbage disposal, is we know that the cost for garbage disposal may go up if HERC does close. However, I will note that at this time, county staff have put together and provided their commissioners with a report on the future of HERC and the actions that would need to be met for a responsible closure of HERC. And we still have a really long way to go to get to zero waste, where county staff think HERC could be closed responsibly. So we have not heard any public statements about a HERC closure coming soon.
Thank you. And then I would just add, I would love to see someday that we get rid of the large waste pickup. It is my least favorite month in Bloomington every year. Yep. Unpopular opinion, but that is what I would love to see.
Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember DeLaSandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. In the past, we discussed other service issues like missed pickups, individually missed pickups on a block. There were certain, let's call them incentives, not to do that and to get back quickly and do that. But what I recall is that we also, we got as a council, like a chart showing how they were performing, how many of those happened. Do you have that data, and can you share it? And how are they performing? Are they doing well? Because I remember previously, there was a disparity between a few of them. And then I guess my other question on that, are there any changes to those incentives in the current contract?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Nelson. At our August council meeting, we did provide a review of service that looked at missed collections back from 2021 to 2024. So I'm looking at it here. I don't know how I can share it on the screen. But in 2024, we'll look at 2023 to 2024. I have Aspen with 0.05% of all of their stops missed in 2023, Republic at 0.09%, and Waste Management at 0.08%. So that was a total stops missed of 1,645. Again, these are reported verified misses. So we know it may not be completely accurate, but this is the data that we have in Coggedale and the communication from the haulers. So to give you a little perspective, the total number of stops in 2023 was 2.47 million, and the misses were 1,645. In 2024, the data that we have from January to May is very similar, actually, but less, a little bit less. So Aspen at 0.03% compared to 0.5, Republic at 0.04 compared to 0.09, and Waste Management at 0.03 compared to 0.08. I'll note that's before, I think the most misses that we receive are typically during yard waste season. So those numbers don't include yard waste yet. And again, that is one of the trickier services to provide within the city. So that's some information I can provide about the review of service in terms of missed collection. Our term sheet does not include any changes to liquidated damages. However, we made some significant changes to liquidated damages back at our last contract extension. So I don't have those in front of me now, but they are fairly high. And I think it's about like $2,000 for a citywide zone miss. And then we have misses language for missing a block and not returning within 24 hours. And we have assessed those when needed. As I mentioned, it has been typically during yard waste season, where we get the most complaints a couple of years ago, kind of right after COVID with staffing shortages. That in particular was a very hard yard waste season, and we did assess quite a fair amount of liquidated damages at that time.
Two quick questions. Any changes to the other portion of the bulky items collection? So you can still call in and get something picked up if you've got it, and you don't want to wait for the curbside cleanup. Is that accurate?
Yep, yes. Mayor Councilmember Nelson, that has remained the same. So residents can still call to get a pickup, an item picked up for garbage or in electronics. We also are still continuing that monthly pickup of bulky reusable items. That's not through this contract. That is with Better Futures as well. So if it's not an item for garbage, residents can do that at no additional cost.
And then the last question, curbside cleanup is every other year. This is a five-year term. So is it two times or three times in this contract?
Two. Yep. So it'll be 2028 and 2030.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Before I call on you, Councilmember DeLaSandro, I'm going to have to make a motion that we tentatively extend until no later than 11:15 to complete our business. I will make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's try and get done before then. Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to table this question. If we want to take it offline, it's fine. I'm kind of interested in understanding the makeup of the consortium itself. And why, you know, because I know when we first contracted this, there were, I think, six or five or six haulers. And then, you know, Republic bought a couple, and Waste Management bought one. Now we're down to three. And then there's this, like, 53%, 30-something%, 10% thing. And like, did Aspen have a chance to come in here and go like, "I would like a little bit more of the city, please"? I mean, how does that work? And is that, I'm asking largely because I care about the service delivery process here, and I would like to know that the consortium is all either equal in their ability to serve or that they've negotiated amongst themselves to give us the best service in the best place for the best type of service being offered across the consortium. So I'm just kind of curious about how that is working. And like I said, if that conversation is something we could, like, have a coffee about, I'm very happy to do that, because I know that's not super specific or related to the term sheet that's in front of us. But I have been surprised not to see more, like, a desire to go back up to having five or 10, you know, however many it is in the consortium.
I'll just say something briefly and then allow Matt Herman, the Chair of the Consortium, to talk about their bylaws and how that works within their agreement. When we first organized collection back in 2016, state statute directs that initial process, and it says that the haulers will provide us with a proposal for service, should they choose to. The haulers that are currently licensed within Bloomington, based on their current market share in Bloomington. So that original proposal from the haulers that we ultimately accepted was based on the current haulers, and it needed to be by law, then based on the state statute that says it's the current market share. And I'll allow Matt to talk about the changes.
Yeah, I think that was the important thing I would hit on, that law, the law, state law determines that we essentially, as a hauler, get to keep our market share. And then each hauler has that market share, and they can continue to service it or sell it. And that's, so one of those two, growth or sale, is not uncommon within the consortium structure. There is no mechanism in state law for sort of a redispersal of market share. So I think originally organized collection statutes, there's been different iterations of them. They're all designed to protect haulers and their existing market share. You know, the small versus big. And so at its base, it's designed to make sure that that market share, that any size hauler has created maintains its value. And then our bylaws as Bloomington haulers allows us to sell our share. But there's no mechanism for, again, like redistribution. But on the service side, and how do we make sure that everything is equal? We're all held to the same standards. We negotiate the same contract. We meet monthly, and I think the three of us have done a very good job making sure we're coordinating, communicating, and really staying on the same page with everything we do. So I hope we've met that goal.
Yeah. Thank you for that. That's really helpful. You know, it's an interesting thing, because I had Aspen services when I was in Richfield, and I love them. But I, you know, I would be fine if they were my guy, although Republic is mine, and I love you guys. You're great. But the idea that, so I worry that you end up, what it sounds like to me is the only way that you can increase your market share in Bloomington is to buy the other guy in the consortium. And that feels like it leans towards helping people who have the money to do that kind of thing versus the littler guys who, you know, and it doesn't feel very equitable. But you all talk, so if Aspen's not complaining, I don't know if they care about that or not. So I'll leave that up to you guys. Appreciate the explanation. And the only other comment I would make is, I don't know if it makes sense, if one of you in the consortium does a better job with organics, for example, should you talk differently about the organics portion of our service delivery as opposed to just a geographical boundary? So I don't know if that's doable. It may not be doable under state law. They may not have any point about it at all, in which case you could get away with a pilot or two to see how it goes. But, you know, could you give Aspen more business in your consortium? Because they'd pick up the stuff you don't want, for example, like the bulky item or whatever. You know, that's just something I've been kind of curious about. So, because I want our service, I want our service delivery to always be at its highest. And it sounds, based on the data, that we're doing really well, and thank you for that. I hope I see you at the State of the City next time. I think we got to sit together a couple of years ago. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Council, additional questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the information. So, Council, we have a recommended action in front of us. You said there was an alternative action in the motion sheet, and I do not see it, but that is... So, and we have those two pieces to consider, Council. Based on what we've heard, based on what we've talked about, we got more in-depth presentation a couple of months back on all of this. What's the council's take on it all? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Just to give you my take, I don't have any desire to go out to... to go out to RFP personally on this one. So I would be fine with the motion that's in front of us.
All right. Councilmember Lowman?
So, so from input standpoint, I guess I wanted to know a little bit more about those liquidated damages. I know that was something that...
Well, and, and we did have that conversation at our last meeting, and I know you weren't here. So I know that information would be available for you.
So I think if, if my colleagues are comfortable with, you know, what we've negotiated, and I know there's an opportunity to have further negotiations with that, or I would assume there would be, if, if with renegotiation with the contract, there's something we need to open up. If we found that those numbers were somehow changing, then I would be okay with, with going with what we got here. So.
And, and I think we heard that those numbers were not changing, correct?
That's correct.
And there's no possibility of renegotiating that? Is that what you're also saying too?
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, based on our review of service, and as I mentioned, the pretty aggressive changes we made in liquidated damages in our last contract, we hadn't looked at making any changes to liquidated damages simply because we didn't think they were needed. I'm happy to provide a review of what those numbers are.
I'm sorry, I'm not being clear with my question. My question is, and maybe you can help me, Mayor, with it. My, my question is, if we saw that there was an issue kind of going forward with missed pickups, is there ability for us to renegotiate that with the contract, with the one that's coming up? Is that clear?
I, I think it is clear. And my sense is, if it's written in the contract, then no, I don't think we can reopen the negotiation for, for liquidated damages. That would be my, my take. And last time, we adjusted liquidated damages was in a new contract, if I recall. And so I don't think in the middle of a contract, we could do that. Now that being said, I did, I heard, and, and actually, we heard from the presentation over the summer, the number of misses is...
It looked so miniscule.
It has gone down significantly. We saw some issues in the past, but it is, it has been reduced significantly.
Yeah. So, I mean, Mayor, if you feel comfortable with that, I don't, I'm not gonna, that's not gonna be something I'm gonna hold up the entire thing for.
Anyone else looking right input here? No?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Councilmember DeAlessandro.
I move to direct city staff to notify Bloomington Haulers LLC of the city's intent to extend, consistent with the term sheet dated November 12, 2024, and authorize city staff to prepare and the mayor and city manager to execute the required and related agreements and documents that are consistent with this motion.
Motion by Councilmember DeAlessandro, second by Councilmember Rivas, to direct the city staff and notify Bloomington Haulers LLC of the city's intent to extend. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you for the good work, and thank you for the, the work that we've, we've seen from our, our consortium over the, the course of the past couple of years. And I know there was some wailing and gnashing of teeth at one point, but it's, I think the service is, is very, very good now. We keep hearing that from residents as well. So thank you, thank you so much. So. Counsel, since we moved item 5.2 to a future meeting, that concludes the 5.3, whatever it is, it was listed a couple of times, 5.3. We are moving on to item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. And I will kick it off basically a quick review of our listening session. We heard from four people this evening. We heard from Mark Janko, who expressed concern, speaking on behalf of the Nine Mile Creek folks, in opposition to the Queen Avenue access to the Minnesota River Valley. We also heard from Chrisanne Loria, and she talked specifically about leaving the trail south of the 106th Street as a natural surface trail. So the rest is paved, and she wanted to make sure that it was, it remained a natural surface trail. Sally Ness asked once again why her name has appeared in police log forms from about five years ago. And Robert Coleman talked about Metro Transit and their service to the city of Bloomington, specifically the Network Now program that they are putting together, the concept plan. And Robert, as he has in the past, is advocating hard for more service to Bloomington for a variety of things. That was our, our listening session earlier this evening. I do not have anything additional. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything? Nothing from Mr. Verbrugge. Counsel, Councilmember DeAlessandro, then Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just wanted to read out on, I think many of us, Mr. Verbrugge and Councilmember Lowman and Councilmember Rivas and I are all down at NLC in Tampa for their 100th anniversary. I did bring a book back. I can leave it in council chambers here for us. It's a super cool event. But I specifically got the chance to, you know, our goal when we go to these things is to understand best practices and innovations from other parts of the country, especially as it relates to the local leadership. And while I, my hot take was that, you know, a lot of the stuff that they might have talked about around funding sources and stuff are pretty much up in the air, given the recent election. There were some really great things that were in flight that I thought were worth noting. Most specifically, there was a, a good priority-based budget conversation with the folks at Tyler Technologies. I know that there are some folks with, Duluth has done it, and a couple of other places. So there's an opportunity for us to take a look at, at that. I think it's consistent with what you might have been hearing from me about, at times, about saying, like, how do we, how do we say this is, this is our strategic priority, this is what we've committed to, here's the impact of that, and then that's why we're funding it at this level for this period of time. And so some cool stuff there. And then I also participated in the information sessions around AI. And so to the extent that we are thinking as a, as a city about, whether it's a task force or whatever y'all are doing, I know that, I know that Amy and team in our IT staff are probably on this. And there was an ethical AI policy from Tempe, Arizona, that I got a chance to review, sent it off to, to Mr. Verbrugge. There's lots of things that we might be able to enact as city council. But if we wanted to do a task force or anything on, on AI and its use at, at this, at the city, I would be very interested in participating in that, because I think there's a lot to offer there. And I use it already myself when people ask me questions, because it's all public information. So it's not hard. But, you know, we have to, we have to make sure we're doing it in a way that's the right thing for the city. So anyway, I had a great time. Thank you very much for the opportunity to attend.
Glad you did. Councilmember Lowman, then Councilmember Rivas. Councilmember Lowman.
And I'm just gonna keep riffing right on that NLC opportunity. 100-year celebration was an awesome thing to see. At the end of the, end of the night, they had the Temptations come through and, and sing, sing to us. And that was kind of fun. And, and other, other, other great surprises, like fireworks and that type of thing. I had the opportunity to go down a little earlier. I went to the NLC classes, and I took a number of those NLC classes. The focus on cybersecurity is something they really kind of, really hit hard, on making sure that, that cities are protecting themselves and being ready for that, that eventuality. They do a lot more of a job of scaring you rather than giving you the ability to ask questions as a policymaker. And so I know that they're gonna, they're, they're changing their entire educational system. So they're, they're providing some ways in which that you can be a cohort with that and provide some services with that. So that might be something we may want to be looking into. I went to another class on, in, the NLU thing around nature and sustainability, which was really, really interesting. And then another one where they're also building another class out around affordable housing. And they're taking cohorts for that as well. And that might be an interesting thing for us. And then just three other real, real quick things here. I think the best experience I had was the streetcar experience within Tampa Bay. It's a free streetcar that went from one point to 10 different stops that they had. It had a way to bring part of the city together. And when they first built it and put it together, it was something they charged for. But when they opened it up, it really allowed folks to kind of move back and forth. And just really created a lot of economic opportunities for the city, which kind of shocked me, because I just didn't think that that type of, of practice would really make a big difference. I saw a similar thing when I was in Kansas City. And then the other thing that I mentioned, I showed this to the city managers, they had to help with economic development, a 3D map that had a, you know, kind of, I'll have to show, show folks if you're interested in it. But it's really had a way of activating the space, and I thought it might be useful for our port, or just for the city itself in terms of trying to, to work with our different development areas. And then I had a couple opportunities to go to a couple of classes with other folks here, with Councilmember Rivas, and I'll let him share that one. And then I also arranged a, a breakfast with a writer who does this entrepreneurial city, which was really a lot of fun, with Councilmember Rivas. So, but great time overall.
And Councilmember Rivas.
I would just piggyback on all that stuff. I mean, it was, it was an outstanding experience to be there. And I was celebrating my birthday on Saturday with the Temptations. So that was, that was pretty cool. Just by coincidence. But you know what, I was in quite a few classes as well. But the one that actually got me off guard, because I was reluctant, as you all know, I'm not the big supporter of affordable housing for, for, for reasons that I, I won't get into it right now. But I had three, a lady and two gentlemen from, the lady was from Wilmington, Delaware, gentleman from St. Louis, Missouri, and one from Texas, from Dallas. And they have had some great innovation on regards to affordable housing. They actually don't call it that. They came up with a different name, so it doesn't sound as bad for the neighbor, neighbors that live in the area. But I really would like us to give it a shot. I mean, they work with partners as, such as banks and businesses around the neighborhoods. And what they have done is amazing. I mean, it's, it's to a really low cost to the cities and the banks and the big businesses around have, have had a lot of input and funds donated to the project. And they actually got 1,100 people involved, a little over 1,100 people involved. 900 of those people participated fully on it. And then 387 of them actually are successful stories that actually went through four or five conversations, and they required training, education, and, and the initial funds were provided by the city. But from then on, these 387 people have been able to sustain their homes, and they have been able to have better paid jobs and, and they're open bank accounts for the first time in their lives. So it was amazing. I completely came out of that session with my mind totally changed. I mean, and that's what triggered me to, you know, that's the only one that I remember in detail. I do have all this stuff in my, you know, my files, save from all the other classes, but that was the one that got me. And the ones on AI, I mean, I know the ethics on it is the big thing, because, you know, I tried to use it at work sometimes to write things, and you do have to do a lot of work to change, because it doesn't look like you did it. Most of it rhymes too much. But, but this is, it's amazing. I think we should give it a try. I think if we're gonna work on a long run for affordable housing and trying to help people get out of, you know, of a bad rap or, you know, out of poverty, I think that's the best approach. I mean, it's working for these guys. I know they have a system very similar. I got the paperwork already, but I haven't put it together. So otherwise, I'll bring it to you and Jamie in a few days. But it's amazing what this guy has, have accomplished. And then it was a great birthday. I don't think I haven't had a bash like that in my, my whole life. Two concerts. What's his name? Joe from the Eagles was there on Friday. Yeah, Joe Walsh, yeah, from the Eagles, and then the Temptations on Saturday. So it was a great experience, and a lot of learning.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
And, and I'm glad to hear you all benefited and enjoyed it. And I've always thought all it takes is one good idea, and it makes it a worthwhile trip. And it sounds like you had a lot more than one good idea come out of it. So, well done. Thank you for representing Bloomington there. Councilmembers Mua or Nelson, anything to add to the, for the good of the cause?
I'm pretty sure I'll do it.
Good enough. We have completed our business for the evening. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, for the second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. No further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned six-zero. Thank you much for the council discussion tonight. Thanks to staff for your great work and to all of our residents who participated. And thank you to our guests who stayed with us until the bitter end. Thank you so very much. It was wonderful. Thank you. Good night, everyone.